This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
There we go. Okay, everybody, welcome to the Southampton Select Board meeting for April 25, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. Let us please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the free and honest United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John's in negotiations at the school committee. He said he'd be along shortly.
Okay, thanks. Okay, good to know. Yeah, so we have everybody here except John, and he'll be on his way, so that's good. All right, let's start out with open time for the public.
Thank you.
Okay, hi Lisa, hi.
Hi. I was wondering...
Put up your microphone down there. Yeah, I know that microphone is always in the wrong place.
I was wondering if you have decided a date for a meeting?
We're aiming it. We were getting the final confirmations. We've got a consultant date who's available, and we're trying to confirm with the different department heads, but May 24th is what we're looking at.
Okay, but it's not, it's tentative still?
Well, it's, I'm not sure who hasn't replied yet. Ed was telling me you don't have everybody to be sure that they're in town. We want to be sure that all of those people that we want there are here.
Mm-hmm.
So that's our best date right now, and when our consultant person is available to sort of manage to read it.
Okay.
So we're going to aim for that, and hopefully, yes.
Okay, and eight weeks ago, you know, the fire, and seven weeks ago, we had a group of people here, and we had many questions, and it seemed, I talked to the others, and we were told that we would be able to ask questions, but at your last Select Board meeting, you were talking about scheduling the meeting, and you said not to talk about the Maple Street fire, but moving forward. But two months ago, or seven weeks ago, you said we could ask questions.
Sure.
So should a group of us make an appointment with this chief if we're not going, about the Maple Street fire, since you said we won't be able to talk about it?
I guess I thought maybe that had already happened. I know you'd had a meeting with him at some point, but maybe you hadn't had a chance to ask all of your questions.
Well, just me. I didn't, I can't speak with the rest of the...
Other people on Maple Street, is that what you mean?
Right.
Yeah, okay. You know, we're going to be in the process of designing this meeting, so we're going to meet hopefully with this consultant person in another 10 days or so, and have sort of a plan of how this is going to be carried out.
Yeah.
But there will be a time for residents to certainly stand up and ask questions, and do it at that meeting as well.
Okay.
But it may be, I mean, depending on, you know, what your questions are, and if the chief is around, it might be a good time to also do a pre-meeting if you wanted to. I mean, there's nothing preventing that.
So will the, she, is the chief of fire one of the people that will be at the meeting?
The fire chief? Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, so what you said that we couldn't, we're not talking about 79 Maple Street...
What I meant, and let me just clarify, it's, I just, and maybe I'm not articulating correctly, my focus, I guess, my thought is not to spend a lot of time trying to dissect all that did or did not happen that night, but to understand the basics of what did or didn't happen, and try to say, okay, what are we lacking in town? How do we need to improve whatever we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
Are there ways that we can plan for the future to make something not as serious as this was?
Right, okay.
So it's kind of that focus, so I wasn't, this isn't intended to be what happened that night on Maple Street.
Correct.
That's not the focus of this.
But it's like a springboard.
That's what I'd like it to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also, last meeting, while I was watching, you were talking about replacing the chief, and something, the wording of just to hold it together until are we, an intern, this interim chief that you were going to check in with would hold the department together until?
Right. The idea is this interim chief would be there doing an assessment of the whole situation within the fire and EMS department, and based on those recommendations, we'd understand what kind of direction we might need to take in the future. But we'd be starting to also look at then what we would need for a person to really be the full-time chief.
Okay.
Depending on the focus on level of EMS service, for example.
So a house burnt down to the ground five minutes from the fire department when we had a fire, a fire chief. Now we're going to have one that's going to hold it together. I'm not sure what "hold it together" means.
I'm not sure what was said that night either, but I'll tell you the truth.
It was, yes, I...
But I mean, the point is, we wouldn't have, we've got one person, as you know, the fire chief is our one full-time staff person at the fire department. So one of the things we've been talking about in our budget meetings is what else do we need? And so we've been looking at other options too, in terms of other staffing that we might need to help boost the fire EMS department as well.
Okay.
So that's not yet fully decided, but it's, you know, certainly...
And have you heard back from the fire chiefs?
I have not. John's been in charge of that, so I haven't been involved with it, so...
All right, all right.
Okay?
But just, you know, when your neighbor's house burns down, and we don't, I don't want to hear "hold it together," because it was not held together by the whole, the real chief, you know?
Yeah.
All right, so the May 24th at the Norris?
We're planning, yeah, Norris is available, so that's the plan, yeah.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I just, again, want to say that no one has said that the current fire chief is in any way accountable, liable for what happened.
Correct.
You just mentioned again that maybe the current fire chief didn't hold it together.
No, 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 no.
So I just want to be very clear that there's no blame about what ended up happening, and that's the reason to have the water department, the highway department, the police department, the fire department, the planning board, all at this meeting to find out where is their public water, and where is their not-public water, and...
Right, right. I think, I think part of what was said, and maybe it was said in our meeting the other night, was...
Two weeks ago, yes.
That we would get, the interim person would be somebody as a stopgap interim person, which is, you know, not the permanent person, is what that was intended to mean, to hold over the fort, hold the fort until we get a permanent person.
Right, right, no, I'm, I, no.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because a couple of times that was said, and I just want to be really clear that there was no...
Yes, he gives it his all, and he does a great job, just, okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks. And we'll, if anything changes from the date, we'll be sure to let everybody know way ahead of time, but we're going to nail that down, I'm hoping by the end of this week. We should nail it down with everybody to be sure that everybody's in town, that we need to have in town from our side to be at the meeting.
So how long would I just call and tell us?
No, we'll, we'll make a, we'll make a public notification on the website, or on...
Okay.
Whatever. We'll get the word out.
The sandwich board, the various community boards.
Yeah.
But feel free to call my office, or if you're in the building, stop in.
Sure.
You're welcome.
Okay, good. Yes, Robert?
Hi.
Hi.
Robert Floyd, College Highway Town Moderator. I'm here to announce the new revised date to Town Moderator information session, so May 1st, Monday.
Okay. At 7:00.
Seven o'clock here. You'll agree with that, Ed?
Yes.
Okay, cheers.
Thank you.
And as Town Moderator, I'd like to have you consider taking the bylaw articles that will be put towards the end of the annual town meeting, and consider including them in the upcoming announced June special town meeting.
Are we, we're not having one, I hope?
We're... Last meeting, and I watched it, and you, it appeared, only if it's true, but it appeared you, you would be having a special town meeting in June. If not, zip.
Well, is free cash going to be certified?
I think we had brought up the idea, if we couldn't do the one in May, that we would move it to June?
I got a different impression, I got a separate thing, but I'm good.
Okay, right now, not planning on one in June, that I'm...
No, I mean, that was by original suggestion. I made the mistake of leaving the room, and the Select Board, as they should, outruled me, and decided to move it a week, so, but...
We moved it a week, you wanted to move it a little bit longer.
And if we move the bylaws meeting to June, who's going to come?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I think the challenge is, you know, having anything, you know, like with the bylaws not in the thing, then that's a, that's a challenge when summertime hits anyway, but yeah. So, and apparently Planning Board is ready, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Hi, John.
Hi, Tammy Wilderness, Historical Society President. I would like to let everybody know in town that there is a Free Historical April program happening this Thursday, 7:00 at the Congregational Church. We have Dave Robison coming in, and he's talking about geniality, and we have some really interesting speakers coming up for our June and September. You do not need to be a member of the Historical Society, but if you were to join, that would be awesome. So that's this Thursday at the Congregational Church, 7:00.
7:00, okay, very good. Thanks, yes, that's okay.
Lucy Dollin, Town Clerk. I just wanted to let you know that I sent the ballot sample to the printer.
Yep.
Well, to the people that sent it to the printer. They have to send me a proof. It has the question on it. As soon as I approve it, they will send it to the printer. It is a three, possibly to five-day turnaround. I'm going to try to have them expedite it, so as soon as we get them back, we can mail them out to those who requested it by mail. So everybody out there that is requesting them by mail, just please be patient with us. We will get them out as soon as possible, as soon as we get them, so.
Good, thank you.
Just to let you know that they, we're working on it.
Great, very good, thanks.
Have you had a lot of requests for mailing?
So far, we're up to 820.
Wow, that's a lot.
For mailing, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so, and, yeah, it's surprising for, you know, just for the locals, so...
It's surprising to have that, that volume.
Yeah, yeah, so just to let you know that that's where we're at, so, and, thank you.
Thanks for getting on top of that, appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else, anything for open time for the public? I'm just going to add one thing, it's something I had ready for last Thursday, and I forgot to do it officially, but as you all know, I think Saturday was Earth Day, April 22nd, and as part of our Monarch Pledge that we have signed on to for the town of Southampton, they gave us a template to look at for an Earth Day proclamation. So even though we're a day or two late, if no one objects to having an Earth Day proclamation, I would like to vote that we issue this, and I can, I can just read this briefly. So whereas the first Earth Day was celebrated April 22nd, 1970, with the goal of inspiring and appreciation of our nation's natural resources through conservation and protection, and whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as climate change, deforestation, food and water shortages, global health issues, whereas pollinators play an important role in maintaining a healthy ecosystem, whereas pollinator species are in decline due to habitat loss and the use of pesticides causing species like the monarch butterfly to decline significantly, and whereas the town of Southampton, Mass. recognizes that biodiverse regions can better support food production, healthy soil and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife, and whereas it is understood that sustainability will only be achieved by meeting the needs of the present without compromising the needs of future generations, and whereas Earth Day is an annual reminder for the need of environmental awareness and continued stewardship commitments. Now therefore, I, Christine Fowles, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Select Board Chair of the town of Southampton, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2023 as Earth Day in Southampton, and encourage all residents and businesses to do their part to respect and enjoy our pristine rural environment. As one of our actions, I've signed the Mayor's Monarch Pledge, which is an initiative that offers opportunities in communities like Southampton to restore native habitat to support the monarch butterfly and other local pollinator species. So that's a lot of wording, but kind of the official proclamation that one would normally require, so if everybody's okay with that, even though it's late, I would like to do this and then put it up on our website, obviously. And obviously, Earth Day is not really just one day, it really should continue on and on and on. I think everybody does their part with cleaning up roadside trash, to, you know, doing things at the parks, or whatever. I think anything that you do is probably more than welcome in terms of keeping our environment a little bit more healthy for everybody, so. So do you want to motion? I guess probably just... I'll make a motion just so that the town of Southampton sign on to the Monarch Pledge.
And she, and I'll second.
And do the Earth Day proclamation as well.
And the Earth Day proclamation.
And I'll second both.
All right, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll get through that.
Can I just ask one question about that?
Yes.
In the past, we've had to actually spell out the different activities that we've been...
That's an online form that we, yeah, we've done, yeah.
And will you do that?
I will, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of it is basically some of the same, the work that we've done before, where we've been working with small areas in town, where we're trying to do more natural habitat gardens, or wildflower meadows, or those kinds of things, or less mowing. We're going to have, hopefully with the master plan for Conant Park, they're going to take a look at the idea of pollinators as it relates to Conant Park, things like that. So we've, we've selected five or six that we had done a couple of years ago, and we'll just renew our commitment to those, basically, okay?
Thank you.
All right, good, all right. So with that, thank you very much. Let us move on to a presentation we have tonight. We have Patrick Brock, who is the Chairman of the Hampshire County Retirement Board. So, welcome, and...
What do you mean?
Welcome to Southampton. I hear you've been traveling the state, and...
Not the state. I do travel the state for other purposes and stuff, but I've been on the retirement board since 1986 with the elimination of county government. I was named Chairman in 2002, and have served continually, and I'm trying to transition out of that right now. Needless to say, an unusual event happened, high inflation, and so the legislature last year in their budget wanted to increase the standard of 3%, not more than 3% on a, on a base retirement, to 5%. That is easily done for the state, and the state teaches retirement systems by action contained within the budget, to allow the local retirement systems, 102 other retirement systems in the state, to do it. There was an outside section given. Governor Baker reviewed that section and sent it back to the legislature on July 23rd. Finally, in November, Chapter 269 was passed and contained the process. In his referral back, he said that he didn't like the language because the retirement boards could approve it, and he thought that an executive level should approve it. Well, with the elimination of county government in Hampshire County, we are technically a regional retirement system. We've always, any action that we need confirmed is the Regional Advisory Committee, which is made up of the treasures of the 37 units. When they finally came to the decision on this new law, it was interpreted by our regulator to mean we needed to get executive authority from towns and those, and they referred to the Chief Executive Officer. The Chief Executive Officer under the Massachusetts laws is the Select Board. So it's a two-step process. The Board has to vote it, and then we needed to go around to the 18 towns and get their vote for approval in order to make this retroactive to July 1st of last year. As Chairman, I decided it wasn't worth a letter. I thought I would offer my institutional knowledge and come out. I sent you a package with the documents contained, and I'll just review them very quickly. I have sent you the actual law. I sent you the PEREC, Public Employee Retirement Administration Commissions, our regulatory agents, determination on that, and then the next step we take is to explain the COLA, is that the COLA is a permanent increase for all the retirees. So in addition to costing it a certain amount of money the first year, it has an ongoing cost, and that cost is determined by our actuary. So our actuary did a review, and we've, we've had this discussion before, because we also have the ability to raise the base, and right now, the base is 13,000. Individual retirement boards can raise it under their authority system to as high as 18. We've actually had somebody this year raise it to 19,000 or 20,000. Hampshire County has been focused on getting the system funded. We're very pleased to report our last actuarial had our values, actuarial value set at 70% of liability, and our market value is at 78%. So we feel very good that we're moving right forward. It's the first increase over 65% since 2006. So we've had a period of time where increasing mortality rates, some poor investment returns and things like that have kept us down below. So we had back-to-back double-digit investment years, which make us feel pretty good. Going forward, there's no guarantee what the investments will do, what other things will do, and everything else. So when we had the actuary look at this, it's an annual, first annual cost of 527,000, but the long-term accrued liability, which gets reflected in our actuarial valuation report every other year, is $2,648,700. Now, the good news is our actuary performs a funding schedule for us. Every two years, it does a valuation, and it devises a funding schedule for the system, and then there is a system where we distribute that cost according to aggregate salary weighting of each unit against the total aggregate salaries. So we also sent you a spreadsheet of the, the cost for a little bit of that, and Southampton is 3.23% of our system by aggregate salaries, and the cost would be 17,000. This cost would not be put into the schedule until we do the valuation in 2024. Because that valuation comes to us probably in September of 2024, the first impact that this would have would be in the funding schedule on FY '26, so...
Not '25.
Huh?
Not '25.
Not '25, because we will use the, the schedule from the previous year, because we won't have the numbers by the time we give notice. We give notice on FY '25 usually in November of, of '23. So we try to give everybody budgeting preparation for their budgets in January, February. So it's a, it's a slow process, but we'll get there. So basically, what it does, in March, the retirement board made approval. I've been on the road since then. I have visited 14 Select Boards, and so far, we have a unanimous in favor. I have two tonight, that's why I'm going as fast as I can. I have to be in Plainfield later tonight, so. But my presence is to answer questions, and I can't tell you what your retirement is going to be, or somebody's retirement is going to be, I'll refer you to the office, but relative to the COLA. COLA is for the regional retirement system was given, our authority on local retirement systems was given in 1997. One of the basic reasons we have at keeping the COLA at 3%, which is the maximum, on a base of 13,000, is that's what the calculation is for the state, and state teaches. It's always been our argument that our retirees should get the same as the teachers that work in our community. That's a, that's our biggest argument. That's what we think is fair. Other towns have been increasing the base. We, from the original law 20 years ago, we've increased it from 12 to 13 when the state did, and that was a million-dollar cost to the system. Especially with the slow growth in assets as far as a percent of funding, we've been more focused on funding, and so that's why. And the other side is the schedule is getting short. We will be fully funded in 2032. At that time, retirement appropriations will drop between 60 and 70% because we're really funding the system. It's, was a pay-as-you-go, some people described a pay-as-you-go retirement system as intergenerational transfer debt, you know? When I retired many years ago, there was not, there was only $15 million in the bank. As of last month, we have $446 million in the bank, so we're getting there. There's still need to be work done on the funding schedule and transition. If we have a, a bad year like we did in '08 and '09, right now, the present law says we would have to be funded by 2040, probably cause another extension. That doesn't help. We need a glide path to full funding, and it's going to come quick, quicker than the legislature can act, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I believe I provided a motion that would be appropriate for your acceptance of this, and I defer to your questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is the first time that this has come before me, at least, in terms of my time on the board, I think. I don't think we've had this before in general. So just to be clear, so we're already, what, what the basic ask is to go up an extra 2% on the COLA, is that what we're talking about here?
Right.
So, yeah.
And we have all kinds of pension software, and our software people have already calculated out what it would take. Basically, we're changing the 3% that we already voted as an annual increase, which is our normal, and recalculating that to 5%. It's $260 at the 13,000. We actually have retirees that get paid less than 13,000, so it would be 3% of whatever they get. We would hope that we'd have that calculated next month, and either probably paid at the end of the month or in June, and it'd be a retroactive check in all the pension payrolls. The other logistics of those that have passed away in, in between, we have to do separate calculations and hard checks for them. So the staff works pretty hard on this, and I felt I didn't want to send any of the staff out at night talking to Select Board, so I said, "I'll volunteer."
Okay.
From the chart that you have here for the town of Southampton, you said that the Southampton portion is 3.23% based on September 2022, so there will be no adjustment in that?
Let me, let me explain that. That's the percentage that we use for adjustment on distribution for the '22 valuation. That gets reviewed every single year. We do a request from the treasures, that's where all our contact is. We review with the treasures the aggregate salaries of all the employees who are in the retirement system, calculate it up for the whole system, and then come up with a new percentage. So that gets changed every other year.
Okay.
Or it gets changed every year. Every other year, there's a full evaluation done.
Okay.
So this is Southampton's share of the 527.
Of the county, right.
For the county, yeah.
So the actuary just looks at the county, all the numbers are blended together, and we use an aggregate salaries. Several of the regional and county systems have looked at and changed to what they call a liability distribution, actual liability of people. And it's not, it's a long discussion for me to explain. I have two new board members on in the last two months, and I expect a third one by the end of the year. I need to get the Board up to speed on what the difference is between an aggregate salary distribution and a liability distribution, and all the issues. The more we look at this, the more we start talking about it, there's a lot of issues there.
So that question I had was, 17,022 is, was it FY '26 estimated?
That's estimated using these numbers.
Okay.
Is it that number? No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
And in addition to that, gains and losses, changes in mortality tables, so there's a lot of changes when the actuary goes through. We look at our assumptions going forward, our, our, our actual cost for the previous two years as to what we predicted, and then an estimate of what's going forward. We have been reducing our investment return every two years for the last five cycles, so.
Any questions? John?
If, if we approve this, when will we, when will we be impacted by our annual assessment?
This July 1st or following July 1st? You will be affected by the FY '26 schedule, which will, will be in the FY '26 budget.
July of '25, when we...
Right, July 20, 2025.
But did you say that we'd have a notification by November of the previous year about...
The treasures have an annual meeting in November, and we update them on the aggregate salary, and then every other year, we bring in the actuary, sometimes I stand in, and we do an actuarial discussion and the changes in the actuarial report. And our reports are all online for anybody to look at. We have a very comprehensive distribution where we analyze the last couple of years, number of people increased, salary increased, everything else.
Anybody else? Any thoughts or questions? It seems pretty straightforward from what you've presented here. Certainly, the cost of living is not going down, we all know that much.
It's coming down. It is.
Slowly, but...
But it's, it's arbitrary which month you look at it.
Yeah, right. So we have, before she gave us some language for a motion, is there any, we have a short version and a long version. Is there a particular...
Short version is fine. Long version, I, I sit on an advisory committee for the state investment, the PRIM Board, and they like to do all the long versions.
Can I say, you said you, there were 18 towns, and that 14 have to approve it, is that what you said, or you've gone to 14?
Two-thirds of the 18 have to approve it, which is 12. We're already there.
You're already there.
Right. But it's important, I mean, we'll give a report, we'll put it on our website... But it's important, I mean, we'll give a report, we'll put it on our website, you know, and I think a lot of people are looking at it. I will tell you, I was surprised on Friday. I had expected that we would see some legislature in the budget this year to try to match the Social Security 8% increase. The mass retirees which were responsible for this increase have taken a different tack. They announced on Friday that there's an amendment in the state budget to increase the state and the state teachers' base from 13,000 to 16,000. I don't know if it'll pass. It's a proposal, but their strategy is they think they need to read, raise the base rather than do a one-time COLA.
Interesting. That's interesting. Is Amherst one of the towns that's approved it?
Amherst is one of the towns that approved it. Amherst has a charter. So with a council form of government in the charter, it designated the town manager as the chief executive officer. Our new member on the board is the finance director from Amherst, Sean McGann. I met with Sean and John, Paul Wolkman, and I also, I'm a retiree from Amherst. I sit on the insurance advisory committee there, so.
All kinds of connections.
Paul put me through the ropes, you know.
They're over 25% of the increase.
And if you add in the regional school district and the school systems and everything, they're right up there. The Housing Authority, they're a third of the system. And it was very important, in my case, to get somebody that's, you know, since I was Amherst and they always liked me, and if I transition out, I certainly want somebody from Amherst that, and Paul, Sean, at the original meeting, spoke out about the funding crisis for small towns and everything else going forward, that the COVID is over, the money coming in. But he also agreed the fairness, and if the teachers got it, he believed that that was fair. And he and I spoke to the town manager on that subject at length, and he agreed and has approved it.
Okay. All right. Any further questions from anybody? If not, could we have a motion? We have the language before us. Would somebody like to do the short version, whichever you'd prefer?
Okay, I'll do the short version, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Do you want me to do the long version, don't you?
No, 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 no.
I move that the Southampton Select Board approved chapters 269 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to cost of living adjustment for retirees, and further direct the Southampton Administration to notify the Hampshire County Retirement System in writing of this vote.
Okay. Motion on the floor by Rini. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Francine. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Motion passes for one. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Thanks for coming. All right. At this point, I don't think we have any reports for the Select Board. Just to say, too, that our monthly reports, because we've heard already from bylaws, they were on the list. Capitol's going to be meeting on Thursday, so there was really no need for them to come talk to us tonight. So we're kind of off schedule with our last section of the reports for April. So we'll see if there's some committees that haven't really reported it all recently. We'll swap that around and let people know, and we'll make another date for them to do that. Lucy, you have a question?
I was supposed to, Ed had asked me like two days ago, last Thursday, and I just, I didn't have time to do it.
Yeah. So now, we know that, you know, we've heard bits and pieces from various people, especially during budget hearings, and it wasn't as crucial as it is earlier in the year. So we'll, we'll see if there's some that we have to make up. We'll, we'll set a date if that's true. So that's why there's nothing on here for reports to the Select Board. Okay, other reports. Town Administrator, anything offhand?
Got a few things. If you aren't aware, just there was some localized flooding as the, and after effect from Sunday's three inches of rain to both Gilbert and Riverdale. Let's see. The contractor for the East Street Bridge will be out there either starting tomorrow or Thursday to put the final touches on the vegetation and erosion controls that the Conservation Commission has permitted. And then earlier this morning, Conservation had a, I will call it a site visit with, in Conan Park, with one of the engineers from GZA in regards to the splash deck and the pedestrian pad. And then next week, on May 4th, we're having our introductory kickoff meeting with Mass DOT for the Greenway Design and the the tip project for it.
Where's that going to be?
It's a virtual meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay. Now, just add one more that I'm aware of. Tomorrow, we've got a pre-bid meeting.
Oh, yes.
Go ahead.
And then tomorrow at 10:00 AM, we've got the pre-bid conference at the Old Town Hall for the information, invitation to bid that is out for that exterior work on the Old Town Hall.
Yeah. And that's basically woodworking and painting. It's not any of the masonry work at this point in time. That would be a separate, separate request. Okay. All right. Any questions of Ed? All right. Okay. How about some select, select board reports? Anybody offhand? Anything? Joy, anything?
Planning Board met last week. They had a public hearing. They said no one from the public came, but a lot of people were watching on TV in regards to them going over the general bylaws. Their next meeting, I believe, is the third. Conservation Commission just wanted to say thank you to everyone who came last Saturday to volunteer at Nancy Whitmer Conservation Area for Earth Day. This also included the Chair and Rini and Francine, so they wanted to say a special thank you to the Board. And also wanted to state there's more weeds in other places if anyone else would like to volunteer. And their meeting, May 1st. For open space, they met, I believe, the 19th. They said there's nothing particularly new. Mountain Waters Project was submitted by Kestrel early, and they're a few days ahead of the deadline. Representatives from the Massachusetts Division of Conservation Services expect to do a site visit May 11th. And the Open Space Committee is planning to hold conservation walks open to the public over the next few months. And for Housing Authority, they're actually meeting tomorrow, but at their last meeting, they did discuss a, having the Select Board sign a representative for the Housing Trust, which they also discussed waiting until a new Select Board has been elected as well. And they are also hoping to get a template for a statement of work for the property and college highway, if Ed would be able to get them a template.
So far, haven't had any luck.
Okay, so.
But Jim keeps, shall we say, prodding me.
Well, greasy wheel, I mean, squeaky wheel gets the grease. And like I said, their next meeting is tomorrow night.
Okay. Good. Ready?
So can I just ask you a question about that? So the template for the work, that means that you're entertaining somebody to propose?
Yes, for an RFP.
Planning for house for that site?
Yes.
Or some structure for that house that will be an affordable?
Yes, for affordable housing, yes.
Thanks. The only group that's met is the Board of Assessors. They met yesterday, and they're in the process of looking at the next fiscal year and the work ahead. And I guess the question that came up is, right now, if they decide to go the route of having more contracted services in the interim, what are their options as far as the budget, Ed? I mean, they can always amend the budget on the floor of town meeting.
Yep.
But otherwise, that's about it at this point, right? There's no transfers that are allowed even in the first couple of weeks of the new fiscal year, right?
You would have to have a special town meeting.
You'd have to, of course. Okay. So that's the only option at this point, is if they wanted to move into expense. Okay.
Correct.
And is there any advantage to moving into consultant versus expense?
Either, either one would be.
Either one they could draw from for consultant as opposed to the wage line, right?
Correct.
That's it. None of the other groups have met since I last reported.
Okay. Francine?
Okay. The Norris School Committee met on April 12th, and it was interesting report about how the Norris School population demographics compares to the other school districts across the state, and in in three areas. In the area of special education, Norris has 27% of its students in special education versus 18% across the state is the average in school districts. So we're above the state average. We're below the state average in children from low-income families. We're at 21% versus 31 to 43% across the state. And we're below the state average with English-language learner students at about 2% versus 10 to 11% in other school districts across the state. So that gives you the kind of the, how we, how we measure up in those categories. We also had the MCAS results, their tests given to students in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grades in math, English, language, and science. And of the 10 categories across those grades, Norris scored below the state average in three categories and above the state average in the remaining seven categories. And there are implementation or improvement plans already in the works for those three, those three areas and grade levels. There's something interesting. It was noted that West Hampton has 97 students enrolled in their elementary school compared with 496 at Norris. I don't know, there may be some consideration, discussion with the West Hampton School Committee about the potential to balance the numbers of students in classroom space between the two elementary schools. And that's something to look, look ahead to. That's a huge, there's a huge discrepancy. All right. The master plan met yesterday on April 24th, reviewed the progress towards several, but not all of its established goals. Updates on the goals were discussed based on information from individual committee members representing boards and committees, whose role was to begin to implement the, the master plan. There'll be, we only got through land use, open space, natural resources, housing, historic and cultural resources. So there'll be a more detailed update once the progress chart, once all the goals are reviewed, the progress chart can be updated. And I just left the Board of Health meeting, and I only stayed for a portion. It was still going on, but there was a discussion about multifamily housing inspection violations. And so that's quite a serious matter. But I didn't, I wasn't able to stay to the conclusion. So that's it for now. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. John?
You've all been at the finance meetings when they've met since they've been here for two nights a week for the past six weeks. And PPP is meeting tomorrow night. Capitol is meeting tomorrow night, and Hampshire Regional meet on May 1st.
Capitol's meeting on Thursday, I think?
Correct. Both committees, I'm thinking it's Wednesday. Both committees are meeting Thursday of this week for, at the same time.
Okay. Good. All right. Good. That's it? All right. Good. Just briefly, on the ad hoc grant committee, we did get a little bit of feedback on the One Stop Program, where we had put in a expression of interest on doing some further development with the design of a future public safety building complex. It was not any real specific feedback, but it was not discouraging. And so basically, that information has been passed on to the Public Safety Building Committee, and the template of the application has been given to them, too. And the grant committee has said that they would be glad to help out, but the heavy lifting has really got to be done by the committee because they know the details more than any of us do. And it's about a 35-page application, so it's not going to be a quick one to get done, and it's due, I believe, around June 1st. So there's basically the month of May is the time to get that taken care of. So that's that one. Meeting going on with the Council on, of course, Council on Aging to do a new grant for Highland Valley Elder Services, and that's being talked about. And hopefully, an application will be put in within the next couple of weeks on that one. And then the last one was the multiple, sorry, the MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant. That one, the deadline is coming up very rapidly, and it's also a very complex application. And looking at all the priorities that came out of the MVP plan, the one that is one of the highest priorities was the culvert assessment in town, and that is actually already being dealt with through the Stormwater Asset Management Grant. So the one that we thought would be probably the most next likely one to focus on would be something related to heating and cooling centers in town. But we decided that it was really above our, our pay grade in terms of understanding the technicalities of what had to happen. So we would rather probably forego any application this year, but prepare, get our, get our ducks in row and get information ready so that we could maybe put in an application next year. But other, other applications or other priorities in the MVP plan, the highest one was already taken and has already been, been funded, so that at least gets us going on that level of things. Okay? So that's basically it on the grant committee at the moment. All right. All right, moving on. We have, I gather, we have a couple people, I see Ian and Jen here, so I'm thinking we have some PCFs or something?
No.
No?
Well, there are, and I know PPP meets Thursday, but trying, trying to save a couple weeks, I didn't know if any of these actually met the parameters that John Lumbra has been given by the committee to approve for the PPP, which would make them eligible for the Select Board to take action on.
Otherwise, we can just get to them when we get to them, rather than?
Right. Otherwise, if there's not any in there that meet those parameters, I'll be, I'll put them back on the Select Board agenda in two weeks.
Would you like us to move ahead, John, while you're looking at this?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So let's, while John's taking a look at that, we'll see where we go with this. Let's move into new business. So we have 24 budget and estimated revenue. So I think we've got our final, final numbers, right?
From last Thursday's meeting, we do have the final numbers.
Did anything change?
I didn't, no, we didn't change anything from last Thursday in balancing it off, so.
Okay. So I believe our revenue was 19 something here. Hold on. You really do have the magic touch with that projector. I have to congratulate you on that.
Please don't. Thanks, man.
So far, until the bulb burns out, right?
So we have revenues of $19,872,080.47. So at the last meeting... So at the last meeting, the select board balanced the basic budget, Budget A, off to be level funded at that point. And the Budget B, which would be the override budget, the expenses were $20,204,635.76 in comparison to those revenues, which means that the override article would be for $332,555.29.
And that's specifically related to public safety issues?
Correct. Basically, fire EMS, police, and then the associated health insurance class with those employees.
Budget A technically isn't level funded. There are changes that were made that are other than contractual.
There's some that we pulled in from column two, yeah.
I will call it a balanced budget.
That's more accurate, I think.
All right. So I think that's the language that we had, the amount of money we had that went onto the ballot question for Lucy, I believe.
Yes, it is.
So that's all there. All right. So I think what we need to do, though, is to get some, something written up that we can use as a handout or other ahead-of-time PR in terms of what this override is all about, so that the residents understand what it is that they're going to be voting for and what the implications are. So I'm hoping that we can have a, you know, something written up with, in conjunction with Chief Workman and Chief Ellingsworth, whomever, to, just to have a little bit of narrative ahead of time, so that people know what this is all about. Okay? Anybody have any further thoughts about budget on this?
I have a question. Do you think that we should, at some point, come up with a alternative plan in the event that the override doesn't pass? Or is that something that will just have to be negotiated once we know one way or another? In other words, some of the areas would need to be funded some way? Or they're not all just going to be off the table in the event the override doesn't pass, correct?
That's basically a question to yourselves. You know, theoretically. I mean, my response to that would normally be Budget A is the alternative.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But like I say, that's a select board decision.
Okay. Francine, John, any questions on budget?
Well, I get, I mean, I wasn't here Thursday, but I'm taking, gathering the fact that something happened. I guess that would be my first question. What happened Thursday night?
We took $5,000 from Highway to budget, to balance the budget. We took about $5,000 from Highway expenses.
And that triggered moving the town meeting to the ninth?
No.
No. We weren't ready with all the Warren articles and other things as well.
So it had nothing to do with the budget?
No.
It had nothing to do with the communication from the finance chair?
No.
Correct.
No.
Did you take any action on the finance chair recommendations or discuss it?
With the... Well, the finance chair recommendations was to not have an override, so I guess that would be a no.
Yeah, that was the only, that was the only recommendation I think I saw. Recommended not to do an override because we might need to do one next year, right?
Was it discussed?
It was brought up, but not discussed in detail, no.
Okay.
Nobody from finance was here either.
And what was the $5,000 from Highway was needed to go where?
To balance the original budget, the Budget A.
Well, on Tuesday, when I left, we were $419 to the good. So I'm imagining we went $4,682 to the bad.
Telecommunications, was it?
Did that have to do with...
Yeah, it was the, actually, it was when the, we actually put the actual dollars in for moving the non-union, non-contractual employees. We ended up with a $1,700 shortfall. And then I found, now that I've got two sets, or two months of telephone bills from the two companies, that we were going to be about $4,000 short in there. So that was added to the telephone.
And that came out of Highway all of it? All right. Okay. So that's what we have. Anything else about our budget? All right. What you thinking, John?
No, I would just, I mean, to Rainey's earlier point, I would say that if the over, well, one of two things will happen. Well, hopefully, Budget A passes, and then the Budget B, the override passes, too. But if the override doesn't pass, then I think we're stuck with the budget, with the original budget. And then until another town meeting, right?
Correct.
Unless we feel strongly enough about something that we need to accommodate it as a backup plan in this particular town meeting.
As like a separate article with a backup for funding?
As a separate article with operational stabilization or something.
Right.
And as of right now, as of today, we don't have certification of anything, right?
Free cash?
No.
No.
I expect that the trial balance sheet will be filed tomorrow. We'll start that process.
Can you just flip up to the Highway, so we get to see the...
Sure.
I think we took it out of, was it general highway expenses?
General highway expenses, correct.
And if you can remind people what the original thinking on that was relative to winter roads and such?
We had moved, I believe it was like $29,000 or $30,000 from winter road wages because the two snow and ice accounts, winter road wages, winter road expenses do not have to increase. You cannot decrease them, but they don't have to increase. They either have to be funded at the same level or additional. So we took the, select board took the extra funding out of winter road wages and had moved it into the general highway expenses for basically a net zero change. On the theory that, okay, if it's another tough winter and we go into deficit, we could recoup out of that general highway expenses to cover whether it was the additional wages or snow and ice expenses.
Well, it was, if I could, it's also, it was also to recognize that when we don't do that, that department head is forced to decimate his budget every year, which defers maintenance across the board. And yes, he's gotten a new truck the past couple of years, but just look at everything else over there that he, I mean, it's being run like we still have 90 miles of dirt roads.
Correct.
Where it's being funded that way.
Chris, can I just make a quick comment? If the question does not pass at town meeting, I would like it if the select board could possibly write something up for us to put at the election, to explain to the voters, you know, this is why it's on the ballot, and because we are going to get inundated with questions. Why is this on the ballot? I mean, and we're going to explain it as best we can, but, you know, we shouldn't have to do that. And, I mean, we'll explain the best we can, but just if you could possibly, if it doesn't pass.
If it doesn't pass, we're going to hope the other way.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Good. All right. Understood. Thank you. Okay. So any further questions on the budget? I think that is where we've left off and where we're going to go with it. We've gotten down to our final number here. Okay? All right. Our next item, I'll wait on, on John, our next item was going to be about the Fire Chief search, but I'll wait on John for a minute.
It looks like, it looks like there are four of these that we can take up.
We could take up. All right. Give you a minute.
Are they in the electronic version, Ed, do you know?
What's that?
Are they in the electronic version?
They should be. All of them should be, yes.
The ones that he's referencing?
Yeah. I'll be toward the, toward the end here. About 204-ish, or others.
Which one do you want to go with?
I don't know. Whatever, whatever your...
These are Fire Chief.
No, go ahead with the PCFs and let's go with, whatever, PCFs, PRFs, whatever we get.
There's one, two, there's four matters in here that don't require going before the PPP because there's no significant change to it. One of them is the resignation of Charles Dalton, effective April 5th, 2023.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve it and accept it.
All right.
One second.
Give you a minute to get to it. This is for the Highway Department, Transfer Station, was it, I think?
Correct. He had gone down to a on-call capacity.
Okay.
And according to his communication of resignation, he's accepted a different position that no longer allows him the ability to be available.
Right. Okay. So we have a motion by John. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Joy? All right. Everybody ready? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Next is a resignation from the Police Department as dispatcher of Cheryl Goose, effective April 14th, 2023. She has a letter attached.
All right. All right. So make a motion?
So moved.
So moved to approve that resignation?
Second.
Joy? All right. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What shift was that dispatcher?
She was split shift generally. It was a evening, two evenings and two minutes.
And the next two are somewhat identical, but they are PRFs to post with no change to the job descriptions, no change to the pay ranges, as previously approved, to now post for this individual's resignation. It looks like you want permission to potentially look for two people.
This is the...
Is it just?
The police, is it part-time telecommunications?
Police or, I'm sorry, I don't have...
The PRF.
One of them's for the resignation of Lauren Soloma?
Yes, yes.
That's PD or dispatcher?
That's PD, dispatcher, yes.
Dispatcher, right? Right. And then, that's eight to six hours, so that's like a part-time, eight to 16 hours. And then there's a full-time 37 and 1/2 dispatcher.
Right.
So he wants to post for a full-time dispatcher and a part-time for as-scheduled dispatcher.
Yeah. Okay. So those are both PRFs?
Yep. With no change or modifications from when we previously approved.
All right. So we have a motion, then, to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Yep. Okay. Francine, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it. Thank you.
And we'll come back to any others in the pile later on, or if there are any others?
I just want to confirm that my PCFs will not be voted on tonight towards the end of the meeting, right? Because I just want to be here, but they won't, right? They're going to move to another select board, the next select board meeting.
Right. The only way for me to sign off on them tonight as PPP is there would have to be no change at...
Yeah. No, that's fine.
The select board itself could bypass PPP and act upon it, if that's what you're asking for.
I just want to know if they'll be voted on tonight or not. So, because I didn't know they were going to be on the agenda. I just realized this morning because I figured they would go to PPPB first and then to select board. So I'm only, I'm here, but I had to kind of, you know, I have some family obligations at home, so I'm just wondering, because I want to be here, if they are voted on.
Right.
Isn't the Robin Riches a continuation of the temporary?
No, it's a different position.
Oh, it is? Okay.
I mean, it is because I felt like I had to put it as a different position because I was trying to fill the position.
Right.
You know, but, I mean, yeah.
Which, again, I'm not necessarily saying that I'm opposed to taking it up and dealing with it tonight. It's just the limited authority that I have.
Yeah.
I can't just do that myself without meeting with the committee Thursday night.
And you guys are meeting on Thursday? Okay.
So it'll be back for us on Tuesday? Are we meeting on Tuesday?
Yeah. We're actually going to, yeah, we're going to actually have to meet next week to sign the Warren anyway, so. So I would say probably not tonight.
Not tonight? Okay.
How's that? We can skip them for tonight and come back when we next meet.
Okay. Thank you.
If that accommodates your schedule. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. All right. John, if you would take up sort of the development of the Fire Chief?
As far as the update on the Fire Chief search, we are looking at having a meeting on either May 4th or May 5th between myself, the Town Administrator, Fire Chief Martin, and Fire Chief Anderson to work out a game plan and a map, and they, obviously with an invitation to the Chair to attend. So that'd be the 4th or the 5th, so I'd, I think that's a Thursday or Friday. They're all blend together now. So I would say that following Tuesday, we'd have something formal back.
Yeah. Okay. That would be great. Okay. Is that going to be an afternoon or evening meeting or not yet scheduled?
I'm trying to do, right now, we're working around the Town Administrator's schedule. So I'd say it's going to be during the day.
Okay. All right.
Town Administrator's been known to work at night.
I'm trying to get away from that.
Just a couple days. Just a couple nights.
Thanks.
All right. Good. Okay. Select Board policy, annual review. I think we had two or three that have been posted now, there should have cleared, hopefully. I think free cash, fuel efficiency, and traffic regulations, or whatever that was. And the only one left to do, I believe, is the fee schedule for the Highway Department.
Correct. Yes.
So all of those should have been up for our 10 days by now, and I would think we would be able to sign those three?
If they get approved, yes.
Yeah. Right. So I mean, but they've been, they've had their 10-day time, I believe, so...
Yes.
Okay. So I would, I would take a motion to approve the three that I think have been posted for that long.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the policy, Select Board policies, free cash, fuel efficiency, traffic control regulations.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. So the Highway fee one is the only one remaining to be done that I'm aware of. So that's something you and Randall are still going to work out?
Yes.
In terms of just double-checking figures of what it really costs to do curb cuts and trench permits and all those kinds of things, right?
Correct.
All right. Okay. Next. So we have some thoughts about our community forum and planning and logistics. At this point in time, we do have the date, in my mind, anyway, of May 24th. The facilitator has confirmed she's available then, the school is available then, and what Ed is doing is confirming that all of our key principals, Police Chief, Fire Chief, Water Commissioner, Highway Superintendent, or Water Superintendent, Highway Superintendent, and the Chair of the Planning Board are going to be in town and available to attend that evening meeting.
And, yeah, the Water Commissioners, yes.
Yes, right. Yeah. Water Superintendent and or Water Commissioners, whoever, between them all, all of them, whatever. Yeah. And have we gotten answers from most everybody yet or not totally yet?
No. Still waiting. We've only gotten responses back from, I think, two.
Okay. We need to get responses by tomorrow. Close of business, we really have to. Otherwise, this facilitator's not going to have enough time to plan. So if there has to be a change of date, I'm hoping not, because a lot will revolve around this. The facilitator also has requested that she have a pre-meeting, especially with the key individuals that I just named, just to understand the situation, what we want to try and get out of this. And so that would help her kind of design the flow of the meeting and how it would happen. And I think, let me just find that email, hold on a minute.
The 4th and 5th sound familiar again.
4th and 5th were possible timeframes that she had available or was suggesting as her earliest availability to come out and have a, have a meeting face-to-face with people. She thought it would be good just to get to know people and get a sense of the town and who's who. Of course, if I could find the timeframes. So I think I did send it to you, Ed, and I'm forgetting what the time was, but one was a morning or one was an afternoon, I think. Here we go. I got it. Possibly anytime on Wednesday, May 3rd. Possibly anytime on Wednesday, May 3rd, or after 2:00 on Thursday, May 4th, would be her preferred timeframe, so as we get some clarity on that, I'd like to be able to get back to her, well, May 1st is already Monday, so that gives her very short notice, but Monday at the very latest, to get back to her to confirm a date for her to come out. Okay? So I would really ask that we try to nail down those other folks that haven't responded yet and get a commitment that they will be here, I think it's really essential that all those people be there, along with all of us, and, you know, let's have a good discussion about what's going on, what we might need to do. We know we aren't perfect, we've got some weaknesses, and we probably can figure out some creative ways to start hacking away at them and make the situation a little bit better.
I will not be at the May 24th meeting.
Okay.
I know it was scheduled when I wasn't here.
Yeah, okay.
Unfortunately, that's the one day that I can't make it, but.
Okay, all right. Good to know. All right, anybody, any questions about that so far? No, okay. So I'll work with Ed on that, and we'll confirm, confirm people, and I'll get back in touch with Debbie to see her timeframe and get her out here, okay? All right, next, we have a municipal hearing officer agreement from the city of Northampton, which I believe is something, this sounds familiar, that we signed last year at some point in time?
Yeah, I didn't realize we were going to have to sign it every year, so.
So this is something, can we explain what this is sort of supposed to do here? It's municipal hearing officer, so what is this person supposed to?
Last year, this fire chief came to the select board and asked if we could enter into an agreement with the city of Northampton for them to serve as our hearings officer. The select board approved that, so actually, anything that needs a hearing, whether someone is disputing a fine, or something like that, the city of Northampton actually serves as doing the hearing for that, for the town of Southampton.
Do we know how many times in the past nine months that this has been in place? They've actually done it?
I don't know, don't.
And was, how was this funded, was this within the fire department budget, $812.50?
Correct.
It's part of their expenses, yeah.
Part of the fire department, yes, expenses.
Okay.
Well, it would be helpful to know how often, if at all, it's been used, I mean, I think it's a good objective strategy, for sure.
This is not limited just because it's coming from the fire department budget, not limited to the fire department, is it?
It would not be.
No?
I mean, it was, it's probably going to be ninety-nine, ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent fire department anyway, but. If we had something else come up, we could utilize it, but. It was predominantly, predominantly done and directed at the fire.
Yeah, but it might allow us to put in something else if we needed to then, that's interesting to know.
And when was it paid for last year, because it says within thirty days of the fiscal year, right?
What's that?
It said payment is due within thirty days of the fiscal year?
I believe last year, I think we entered into it in the middle of the year.
Mid-year somewhere.
Right, exactly.
I do recall.
Oh.
Yeah, and so, yeah, I think we didn't realize that we had to sign a thing every year and keep on.
No, I, my mistake, I just assumed it was, much like the animal control contract with Westfield or whatever than that.
So this got to go to one.
We signed and would have been good for, you know, three years or five years or whatever. So I had missed this when they sent it out earlier this year.
And does Chief Workman still support this program?
As far as I am aware, I can ask him though.
Can I just say, just having participated or listened in on the border health meeting, I think this is going to be an important position for next year. Given, given the violations that were discussed.
So to have a hearing officer?
Yes, if it goes that way.
Okay. So, well, are we ready to go ahead with this, it's a commitment of $812.50, which I assume is already somewhere in the chief's budget that we can pull from?
Well, I would say if we're asking for an override in the fire department, I'd say it's not in there.
Yeah, well.
But, I mean, I guess, what exactly, I can Google it, but what is Section 2C of Chapter 148A, because that seems to be the only thing this applies to. If I read, I'm on paragraph three, it almost sounds like code enforcement, so.
Code enforcement by the looks, I mean, it sounds like it is, I mean, that's.
It almost sounds like this should be coming out of town legal cost, not fire department, because the building commissioner could have one in here, and it's not really transparent, plus, I think they, oh, it's a deliverable, where when you send over the renewal, you tell us how many times. Although, our department heads should be able to tell us that, and the fact that they haven't kind of tells me we probably haven't had any violations.
I also wonder whether other department heads are aware that this service is available?
Or we haven't had a need to use the service, maybe?
But I would think in the absence of this, this body would serve as the hearing officer. Correct? If we didn't have this in place, it would be the select board, would be the hearing officer.
Well, it depends on what it is, I mean, a dog hearing has to be the select board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something, but I mean.
We can't, you know, contract with them for that.
Yeah, but this, this looks like it's specific without looking up the chapter, it looks like from the narrative, it's, you know, related to code violations.
Can we just add this to Tuesday's agenda, and maybe if you can check with Chief Workman and find out how much has been used?
And just.
Whether it's clear that other department heads, other departments are able to use this.
Yeah, clarify that.
They are.
If we're going to pay this amount of money.
That was the question I had, yes.
We understand how it's going to be used.
But I would say from the discussion, it would include upstairs, it would include the fire department and other departments, obviously concerned with.
With code violations, but it can be, can be a variety of, like we said, it can be the building commissioner or anybody else that might have a violation too, so.
Again, but it's written between the city of Northampton and the town of Southampton, and the last sentence in paragraph three, that the hearing officer will notify both the town, which is the select board in this case, and we haven't gotten any notifications.
Have not heard of any, at all. So then, that would be a question too, both for the chief, but maybe we can, I don't know, to reach out, who, to the mayor's office, they're the ones that would send this?
I can take care of that.
Yeah, and just find out if there's been any action on this, but to clarify that if this were in place, would it apply to any of our municipal departments? Okay, let's postpone this one until our next meeting.
Yeah, and only because we are going to reach out to them, could they correct the signature page?
Yeah.
Before we have to bring it up?
Yes, thank you. They can do that.
I was just, I was just going to say that, thank you.
And it's referenced somewhere else too in the letter, in the beginning.
On the signature page and on page three.
I thought they were a more progressive community.
All right, very good. Okay, so thanks for that, I think we'll hang on to that till next time around. Let us move on then to warrant articles. So we have a warrant, draft warrant before us, and I'll let Ed run through where we are, I know this has changed from the last meeting, we've got more clarity and updates, I know you said you were still having some formatting challenges, but hopefully, things are better than they were, and we know that we've got a few placeholders here.
In other cases, they are.
This is the same draft we got right before the meeting?
Yes.
And are we, do you want us to ignore the table of contents page still, just for pagination number?
No, actually, you can pay attention to the table of contents page now, if you want, if you care to.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, we just would want to be sure that things are on the right page, obviously, yeah. Could you make that just a little bit bigger, too, maybe? Bottom right, if you can move your. Where it's.
I don't know if I can or not.
The percentage in the very bottom, bottom right, there's a.
Ah, there it is.
Slide that over a little bit.
I still haven't gotten used to ten.
Little bit too much, but there you go. Slow motion. Just a little bit more, there you go, stop, perfect.
There you go.
All right, we can all read now. Okay. Okay, so you want to walk us through this, Ed?
So the first three would be, darn this thing. The first three would be transfers from free cash per our free cash policy into capital stabilization, operating stabilization, and the OPEP fund. Article four would be authorization to enter into a five-year contract for lease of postage received for town hall. Article five is the annual operating budget for fiscal year 24, which would be the balanced budget, budget A.
You need to check that amount, right?
Yeah, that doesn't look right.
That one amount is not right.
I have to go back and check through those, someone was helping me with that, so I want to double-check those numbers.
Right. And just back on the, the first three with the, the free cash, so with things going in, are we, we're hoping that we will have a free cash number by town meeting?
Yes, we are.
And so if, would we, not likely to have it by Monday or Tuesday, though, or, don't know?
We can be hopeful and change these at that point in time.
But we may not have an actual figure in here right now, okay?
Correct.
All right.
So those dollar figures are subject to change.
So number five is slightly off then, right? It's not the, it's not the 19729, it was.
19 something zero eight zero or something.
19872.
19872 something, yeah, right, so we know that budget, number five has got to change, yeah.
Correct.
Would the, would the amounts too then, from the loan and from ambulance fees, be the same, or would those need?
Those would be the same.
Those don't change, okay.
Those would not change.
All right, so then Article six is a supplemental?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's the override budget, for $332,555.29. Article seven is the transfer station enterprise fiscal 2024 budget. Article eight would be the water enterprise fiscal 2024 budget.
Anybody have any questions as we go along? Let's, we get through page four here, anything, any questions from anybody? Okay, keep on.
Article nine is transfers for fiscal year 2023, police department operating expenses within their own department. Article 10 is transfers for the library department operating fiscal year 2023 expenses to cover.
Utilities.
Their library utilities, that's a doggone thing. Article 11, there are transfers for townwide and municipal departments operating 2023 expenses for the photocopy or lease in paper, $1,205.39 from the town hall custodian account, and $171.46 from administrative expenses, total of $1,376.85.
All right.
Article 12 is a transfer for workers' compensation, operating fiscal year 2023 expenses from our workers' comp audit, $6,181.33 coming from the health insurance budget account. I'm not going to do this right now. Article 13 is transfers for the annual town audit for fiscal year 2023 expenses, $10,000 from the assistant town accountant wages, and $3,000 from health insurance.
Okay.
Do you want us to tell you any edits now, or just through the mail?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Through the mail, please.
Did you see something offhand there?
Article 14, this would be an appropriation from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation for EMS fire departments operating fiscal year 2023 expenses. $250 to EMS certifications, $27,250 to ambulance EMS expense account, $2,500 to fire EMS building expense account, and $2,000 to ambulance billing.
Just to note, you've got an increased run or something in that second one on the reason up there?
What's that?
Just highlight that second reason, something's not right there, you've got unexpected increased cost run increase R.
I think it's supposed to be runs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It may be.
That said runs too, I was trying to get it on one line, so.
It may be in there twice, yeah.
Article 15 is, would be a transfer from capital stabilization, it's a, there's four capital request placeholders, Article 15, 16, 17, and 18.
And we'd know that after capital meets and does their ranking and so forth?
Correct.
Do we know how much money capital has to play with, in terms of their?
It flows from free cash, they have, and I'm doing this by memory, I believe there's $40,000 left from, carried over from fiscal year 22, from the capital stabilization account, and I'm estimating $90,000 would be the distribution from free cash.
So maybe 130 total?
Right. Article 19 is the vote, the second vote to establish a municipal light plant. Article 20 is a vote to establish an opioid stabilization account. And then, what's highlighted in yellow there, there's two parts of it, I don't know if the select board actually wants to appropriate any funds from that stabilization account at this time, if you don't, then that, those items in yellow would disappear.
And remind us what we've, we've received, some $30,000 or $40,000 already on the first opioid win, but we, this would also take into account the new one we just signed on to that hasn't certainly been settled yet, right?
Correct, I'd really have to go back and take a look at.
So.
Just to answer your question, I'd be hard-pressed to appropriate any dollar amount, because there's no plan before us on what we're going to do with this.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And it, and it doesn't mean that, you know, at a special town meeting or whatever, that it cannot be appropriated at that time, so.
So if that, that were not in there, then that would stop at settlement funds?
I'll go back.
No, sorry, without further appropriation?
It would stop right at 100% of the opioid litigation settlement funds we see by the town.
Period.
Period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with you, but, you know, don't forget, this is an override budget, so we're basically getting funds from an opioid settlement and putting it into a special fund for future appropriation, at the same time, we're asking for an override, so I have mixed feelings about it.
Are we restricted on what we could spend this money on anyways?
Yes, we are.
This can only be spent on, on substance abuse kinds of issues, right?
Correct.
I agree with you, the optics aren't going to look good.
Yeah, yeah, I don't disagree there, but.
Well, I mean, I think there might be a case for some funds being covered by the operating budget, whether it's for sharps or other things that are in emergency services, but.
You could take that particular article out and deal with it at a special town meeting.
Keep mentioning special town meeting, Ed.
Yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna tell me that this board or this town will not have a special town meeting December, January, February?
Oh, okay, I just saw, I'm not, I'm just not, I'm thinking not June.
No.
No, at any time during this fiscal year, you could, if you have a special town if you have a special town meeting this fiscal year, you'd want to establish it at that point in time. Because then whatever we're receiving this year is going to go into the stabilization account. If it doesn't go into the stabilization account, you better have, we had better have appropriated it at a special town meeting to go somewhere.
Does anybody see any downfalls of actually really having this, at least to establish the, the account now? I mean.
You know, as long as we explain.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Yeah, because, I mean, once the fund's established, there's funds already that can go in there.
Correct, yeah.
Versus wherever they're sitting.
Right.
Whether they're being put to work to earn money.
Yeah, no, I'd, I'd.
Correct.
I'd rather have an account established that we can put money into, so we can.
Yeah. And I would rather, if everybody agrees, do it now rather than later, then I don't have to remember it again later.
Yeah, no, I think, I think so, but I think we would agree to take out the actual appropriation of any money to it now. Okay, moving on. Revolving funds?
Article 21 is the revolving fund spending limits. And these what they, these are what they were last year. So the fire department brush services increased from $10,000 to $20,000 to accommodate the purchase of the ATV and trailer.
I thought that was a one-time.
Right. So that's why I'm bringing it up. I mean, the, the select board would like.
Do we move that back down to 10,000?
If that's what the select board would like, I absolutely will.
It, it was 10,000 prior to this one-time request, right? To accommodate the brush truck.
Then it should be one-time.
Brush truck that took two years to take care of.
Or was it the UTV? No, was it partly the UTV thing, or no? To buy the UTV?
ATV and trailer, correct.
I mean, the fault lies with the police department who couldn't secure their grant.
Right.
I love it, I love it. Well, I mean, it, it was.
See if you're paying attention there, chief.
That's what you get for coming to meetings.
I mean, it was clear at that particular point in time that the fire chief must be a much better grant writer than the police chief was.
There we go. So are we requesting that we take the fire department back down to 10?
I've made that change.
Okay.
I have a question about that. So this probably is not related, but we did get a communication, and I did check with you about it, that there was a request that the pay for the electrical and plumbing inspection inspections are increased. They have not been, gotten an increase in 10 years, and.
And that would be a falsehood. Because I found that the last approval of those fees was in December 2017 by the select board, implemented as July 1st, 2018. So it's still five years, it probably should be looked at. However, I now have to go back and find out, okay, is, where does it say? What percentages of those inspection services does the inspectors get? I don't know if that's by policy or by law or whatever, I don't remember seeing it, so I got to find it.
Okay.
Because there's, there's two ways to go about that, is, okay, increase the, increase the fee, and then.
Right.
That their portion will follow, or, or do we find wherever it says that and change the percentage level up a little bit?
Right.
Right.
So does that impact these, these revolving funds?
Should not.
Okay.
Last, last time I looked, neither one of those were close to the max.
Okay, well, I just wanted to keep it on the agenda because we did get a communication about that, and I did run into somebody who's an inspector and said, oh, by the way, East Hampton just raised their amounts. And so we want to be competitive and want to not have a problem with getting these electrical and plumbing inspections done.
Okay, Fred, you?
I was just going to ask, so does this spending limit accommodate an increase to the electrical inspector?
No.
It does not.
Does not.
It's separate, I think.
It's separate.
Yeah.
All right.
Just remind me of it.
Yeah.
I think they're both in here.
It would be probably on the, on the, on the building commissioner's fee schedule, right, on the?
It should be the building commissioner that's bringing these requests to the select board.
Who oversees the weights and measures revolving account?
Yeah. My administrative assistant and myself.
Didn't we just go, we just went through that to make sure that the fees match or pay?
We did, and I went up, that used to say $1,500.
Oh, it did?
Yes.
So this is new?
This, that one would be new.
Okay, what else is new besides going down on?
That's it. That was the only one I changed.
Weight and measures.
But I had forgotten about that one.
A couple of meetings, remember, we were trying to, to be sure that we had the right figures because things were.
So the only change from last year is down, the brush, down by 10, and this one's up to 5?
Up to 5, correct. And then, yes, as you will see, there's a separate fund for the electrical inspections at 20,000, and a separate fund for the plumbing inspections at 20,000.
And those have always, they've been there, though, right? There's nothing changed?
Been there for a while.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions on those? If not, community preservation?
Yes. Article 22 is a report of the community preservation committee, which sets aside their funds, and at least 10% have to be put into the historic resource reserve, the community housing reserve. And, and in this case, it's open space, but because we have the 10-year debt for Pomeroy Meadow, the road land, which was aquifer protection, that dollar amount in the debt basically suffices for the 10% into that one. And it also sets aside their administrative expenses of $7,500.
It might be good to distinguish between the two Palmer Meadow lands.
What's that?
Because isn't the other one, the newer one, the Courtney property, isn't that also referred to as the Palmer Meadow Road Land?
One is Lower Palmero and one is Upper Palmero.
Oh, that's how, that's how we refer to it. Yeah, we have not acquired the Upper Palmero Meadow as of, as of this point. And it would not be a, it would not be acquired under debt.
Right.
Yeah.
That might be a good thing to pass along, Joy, to the preservation. About, I mean, about, is that going to continue to be called the Palmer Meadow Road Land?
Article 23 is CPC funding for Footbridge and Manhattan Meadows for the conservation commission, non-authority.
So that's not grant funded, that's directly from CPC?
No, this, this is in addition to the grant that they have from Mass Trails, or?
Yes.
All right, so it's not a match, it's straight out 7,000 towards the bridge from CPC?
Yes.
So the cost of the bridge has changed, yeah?
Correct.
Got it.
See, someone would like me to use action instead of act, so.
Okay.
Article 24 is CPC funding for grant, the grant match for the Greenway design of $65,000.
Just to, just cross out for the purpose of, second sentence, purpose of for, just take out one of those, either of, for the purpose of.
What's that?
Take out for at the end of the second sentence. For the purpose of, just take out for while you're sitting in there. Right, right.
A for?
Right there, yeah.
There?
Yeah.
That one?
For the purpose of, or the purpose for matching grant funds? One of those doesn't belong.
Which one would you like to get rid of?
Take out for.
Take out for.
Purpose of.
Of matching grant funds, yeah, I'd, I'd take out for, I think.
There's two fours.
I know.
First or second, please?
Second four, for the purpose of matching grant funds.
At the end of the second line, yes.
Yeah, take out that one.
There.
There you go.
So are there any restrictions to CPC funds being transferred to a committee? I mean, it happens to pack all the time, but is there, are there any restrictions to transferring funds out of CPC to an appointed committee? No?
No.
Just curious.
Just like, I mean, someone's got to be in charge of it, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Just wondering why the high-owthing trust has to establish a trust in order to get the funds as opposed to going to housing authority?
Well, I mean, the alternative here would be, I would say, to the select board.
I'm not asking for that.
Yes, well, I mean, the Greenway committee won't have their own bank account, so I mean, it's not going to them.
Yeah.
So maybe that's just a funny, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's the Greenway committee's request, but it's a part of the matching, or extra, extra money for, that'll come out of the town coffers. Okay.
Article 25, CPC funding for construction of playground at Labrie Field. Then we go to naming rights. Article 26 is renaming of East Street Bridge. Article 27 is naming of accessible playground at Labrie Field. Then we go to general bylaw amendments. Article 28 would be amendment to the general bylaws for renumbering and recaption. And for some reason, I've got two different, I think Article 29 is the second part of it, and, oh, nuts. And I probably got the incorrect title on it, so.
Yeah.
So.
So 29 must not be the same title, yeah?
So if you want to help me with that one, Chris, I'd appreciate it.
We'll get to that.
Because this is the changes to what is now summarized here on the next nine pages of general revisions, agricultural commission, community preservation committee, council on aging, finance, officers and employees, personnel policies and procedures, reports, town meeting, alcoholic beverages, animals, building construction, farming, fires and fire prevention, historic preservation, licenses and permits, marijuana, non-criminal disposition, the table that goes with it.
Yep, and the main thing that happened there, just for anybody who's following, is that these are, these are basically more grammatical changes than anything else. As you'll see, all the underlining and crossing out is just to make some things a little bit clearer. But these are all bylaws that have already gone through individual town meeting, passed through the AG's office. What's been done here is to take out any penalties and fines that's set up to, as well as working with the different departments to make sure that their, the language in their actual bylaw matched this non-criminal disposition one. So rather than, than putting the language in the text of the bylaw, it now just says, refer to 203 for the fine or penalty, rather than having it in two places and having one not be consistent or correct.
And look, going, looking forward, looking ahead, any revisions to these fees would only require
Yeah.
the, to amend one bylaw as opposed to however many fees there are here.
Right.
And that would constitute maybe 2025 bylaw changes, so this makes it much simpler.
Yep. Okay.
Can I ask you a question about it? So violation of dog kennels, it says first offense $500.
Some of these are by state law.
Okay, and then the second one is dogs, police department, that must be nuisance-type things, right?
Yes.
Barking and whatnot. And then it says humane care animals, first offense $50. Is that a state thing? I mean, could we, could we make that more if we wanted to, so that humane care of animals was a higher offense?
Believe it's a.
I'd have to look.
And it's based on a state one, for sure, I don't know. Yeah.
It's criminal.
Okay.
It's not a bylaw, civil law.
Okay, okay, yes, you're right about that.
Okay. Okay. So there's quite a few, but this lists all the, all the various fines and penalties. And the actual explanation of what the fine is, is more inclusive in the narrative of the bylaw itself.
Right, and that's why the citations are there under the title.
Yeah.
And once we get the new system, they'll be very easy for people to find.
And hopefully, if the public is being asked to approve this, that somebody could speak to it if questions come up, because I can see how questions would come up. Not so much as questioning the offense or the dollar amount, but what does this mean? Does it, you know, list them, like numbering buildings? I mean, obviously, we just approved that, but some people might not know what it means. Marijuana, just says police department, $300 per offense, what does that mean? So hopefully, somebody can speak to this if questions come up, because it just references them.
Or, I mean, we'll have to have a couple of department heads ready to speak to issues like wetlands and waste management, stormwater management. I mean, we're going to have to put other people on alert for something.
Yeah, I mean, because the intent, I mean, what you're seeing as the narrative is only the piece that's changed, it's not the full bylaw.
Right.
Which are, you know, already, already been passed through, so hopefully.
Chris is right, we're only talking about the fee here.
Yeah, but I hear you from what people wondering what the fee is, what the fine is all about, so.
Yeah, especially with marijuana, it's supposed to be legal now, so. What is the offense? Over 12 plants, or?
Oh, you're going to go back and do more homework, huh? All right, go for it. All right, so the 203, and then there's a few other bylaws that are affected by that. So it basically just gives a summary of various changes. A lot of it is not having licenses or permits, I think.
So are we just going to approve this on Tuesday when it's final?
Mm-hmm, yeah, because we don't have, I don't think we have all the.
Yeah, okay.
The details on this, yeah.
And we had to cite every bylaw which had a fee in it or referenced a fine or penalty, you know, and reference, you know, the chapter 203, which is that, which is the fee chart. So that's why you'll see so many here where there's no obvious correction other than the fact that we're now referencing a different chapter for them to find the, the fine.
Yep. Okay. All right, so that's the general bylaws, and these.
Then you've got the zoning bylaw, what I've, changes. So Article 30 is amending the zoning bylaw amendment of the zoning map that the planning board has recommended upon petition of changing that parcel, map 39, parcel 26 on College Highway, from industrial park to commercial highway.
Which parcel is this?
The big red barn.
The big red barn.
Or down nearby it?
College Highway.
Or that parcel itself, or next to it, or?
Probably the parcel itself.
About 14 acres, yes.
So it's amending the zoning bylaw to change it from one to another?
From industrial park to commercial highway.
And amending the zoning map as well?
Yes.
And what's the bylaw, section 3B? What's that about? That, that's the map, or? I guess it must be. amended Southampton zoning match, ZBL, section 3B, okay.
So how, how is this different? Or maybe this isn't different, but didn't this already get denied by the voters?
Yes.
Is this another way to do it, or?
It's been two years.
So this is the same question that would, came up two years ago?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so it's, it's had a two-year wait before it could come back, before the, before the town. Okay.
And then Article 31 is the zoning bylaw amendments. I'd like to say, much like the general bylaw amendments of E code, but I'm not going to go that far, repeal and replace existing zoning bylaws amended by the planning board and the revisions edited by the general code corporation for chapter 275. And then the. And then the, if I can find it, I probably won't be able to. Is that the second package you have is the summary of their changes, which I would attach to this.
Yes.
And then the question is, how many copies of the whole zoning bylaw as amended do we print? Because it's 132 pages long.
Yeah, I don't, I think that's, it's a challenge on this one, honestly.
And, and I will print it for Monday night, so Robert can read all 132 pages. Sorry, Robert, I couldn't resist.
No, I mean, you know, the summary of, of, you know, the comments on the changes. I mean, you got six pages of that, so it's all the zoning bylaws. What I still, I guess I don't understand is how many of these were just minor edits like the general bylaws, or how many are new ones that we haven't even really seen.
There are some new ones.
Yeah, that'll be up to the planning board to walk us through that.
Yeah.
Because I think that's
One, there's
Because I think that would
Can you do a sign up list? People that can sign up to say, I want a copy?
I mean, we'll have some copy, I don't think we'd make 100 copies.
No, I would not.
We'll have a certain number of copies available, for sure.
Can it also be posted somewhere, so if people don't?
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna have to see what I have to, it's so large, I don't know how I can get it on the website, but I'm gonna, whether it be by link instead of PDF or whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
But, you know, to the extent that there's anything new, I would think that that could generate questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
If it's a bylaw that people haven't, you know, seen before.
It would make sense.
I would, you know, and I would hope that, you know, as with any bylaws, people take time to, to sort of get familiar with them, but I mean, it looks like there's been a lot of work done. I know they've been working on it, as we've heard, for several years to put this together, and they've been working with a couple consultants to finalize all this. So I'm not knocking all the work that's gone into it by any means. I just, I'm just not sure how edible it's gonna be by the voters to know what they're looking at, but.
Well, I like the fact right now it's coming at the end.
Yeah.
Well, that's by specific design, in this particular case.
I mean, there are just, you know, the new sections are things that like, I'm sure people wanna see and know what they're voting on. And then the use regulations, there's been changes made to that.
But I mean, there's, it's all, it's all coded as one bylaw number of 275, but there's 10, 10 different sections under that bylaw. And then there's multiple subsections under the sections, so it's
But to your point, Chris, is if there's a way to distinguish between which sections are just, you know, updating or wordsmithing
Yeah.
with no change of substance.
Right.
And I know our town moderator rarely likes to do this, but, you know, could they be taken up as a package? But if there's something new, then we've gotta take it up separately by itself.
Yeah.
You know.
It's a little challenging, because everyone, well, I mean, they all, part of this exercise with E 360 is to recodify the whole thing. And so 275 has been the assigned number, I guess, for the zoning bylaw.
Town Council's recommendation was much the same as the bylaw review committee had done. You got, you have a recodification article, and then you might have two other articles. One which has the articles in it with the minor changes, which would probably be like the bylaw review committee has listed. And then another article that might have the changes that are much more substantial or newer.
Yeah.
We had to go as far as correcting typos in, in the, in the general bylaws. I mean, some of these changes are the correct
Yeah, some were just, you know, grammar and typos in some of them, yeah, exactly. They were very, very minor.
Insignificant, yes.
But no, some of these others are, are
The others are, I agree, are much more substantial.
More heavy duty, so. Anyway, so with that, though, it looks like, with the renumbering, if we change that, I think that was 29, 28, 29, so it looks like we have 30.
Yes.
31?
No, no, no.
31, so, 31. Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I think the zoning one is just gonna be a little challenging, that's all. I know they had their public hearing the other night, Joey, you said, and I know people were listening to the meeting but didn't come in person, so people didn't have a, or didn't, didn't take advantage of it to be able to ask any questions, so. Guess we'll do it as it is, all right? Anybody have any thoughts or questions? So we need to get all this language tidied up, and what's your timeframe? If Robert's gonna be talking at 7 o'clock on Monday night?
Well, he'll, he'll have it for Monday, the Select Board will have it over the weekend.
Yeah, okay. So we need to meet guys, I think, Monday to sign off on this, right? Monday at 6:00, everybody have, available? I hope. So we can just see these few changes. I mean, if there's some typos that we need to change or correct, obviously, but fill in the blanks, especially on the monetary side of things.
Is that gonna be the sole purpose of Monday night's meeting? Or are you gonna fill the agenda?
No, 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 it would really be to focus on the warrant, and I think we might want a short executive meeting, that's all. That would be it.
So, you feel comfortable limiting it to an hour?
Yes.
All right, I can be there.
And then, and we're supposed to email you any corrections?
Yeah, you say yes, please.
Okay. Great. All right, any other comments or questions on those? All right, if not, let's move on to ARPA land. Where do we begin? So, we have a variety of things here, let's see now. What's first? So we have both, some ARPA requests that are outstanding to deal with. We've got quarterly reports that have been submitted by those that have received, excuse me, ARPA funding. If everybody's had a chance to look through some of the quarterly reports. I will say that basically, everybody's been great about sending in their quarterly report. Maybe a day or two late, but we've gotten them. And those that have actually finished all their activities should feel free to go ahead and mark complete on their next report. And then just make sure with Bradley's financial figures that your figures and his match. If you think you've got a $12,000 ARPA award and you've got $3,000 left unspent and not needed, then be sure that you've, you know, talked to Bradley and make sure that you, you're all seeing the same figures, I guess. So we have, basically, I think we've got just about all. I think there might be maybe at most one or two, I, I don't think so. I think that we're missing some of the X's in the column. I think all the reports, when I was reading through them, basically had, had come in. So that's, that's great for people to do that, so much appreciated on that. The tracker itself, Judy's updated that a bit.
So I have one question on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is the difference between completed or converted?
What?
Converted, line 17.
Of which one, on the quarterly report?
The one pager, well, ARPA Quarterly Report Tracker. I think it's the one you have in your
Oh, converted. That was the one that was a classification plan that ended up being mostly a grant. We saved, yeah, we saved, you know, we put $2,000 in it in case we needed it, but the classification plan was funded through the community compact, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so we have $2,000 in there, which we haven't needed to spend yet. So I think it was just a note that it was, yeah, it's not complete yet, we don't have it completed, so. Maybe that footnote doesn't really need to be there.
And that highway superintendent did email a while back the Select Board and requested that his union positions be included in that classification study because of the fact that we're having so much, shall we say, issue with filling those positions. Which if that was the case, it would probably utilize that $2,000.
Okay. Yeah, John?
We haven't made a decision on that yet, have we?
That's the only one we've had.
No, that's why I'm bringing it up again.
Yeah, that's the
Well, I, I would just, I mean, my immediate reaction is caution that we're be, we have a department head who's asking us to do the work of the union to determine it seems odd.
Well, are we, are we concerned that we have positions that we can't fill?
I am not, because I was assured by both the department head and the town administrator when we right-sized that ship during the last contract negotiation, that he had everything he needed to move forward.
Fine, it all flows uphill when stuff can't get done, so.
It's true, but I'm just saying, if we're gonna do a wage study for one union,
Then we gotta do it.
When's the next union gonna come in and say, we want you to fund our wage study too? I'm, I'm not disagreeing with it, I'm just, bells are going off in the back of my head that this will have a cascade effect going downhill through the coffers.
Do we know how, how far along we are with the, with the study?
Yeah, I'll check.
If you would check on that and just see what, what our timeframe is on that, that would be helpful.
Are we going over the quarterly reports that we just?
We can, yeah, I didn't know, I was gonna ask if, if people wanted to go through and
We had a couple of questions, that's all.
We can do that, but I just wanted to point out, so we have the, the tracker. I think John, you requested that we put a couple of footnotes on some of these, so we have done that, I think. And that was that, the converted one, oh, sorry, that was on the quarterly report tracker. We got too many trackers, I'm sorry. On the application tracker, here we go. The grant money was put there as a footnote at the bottom. And then that a couple of these, the school ones, we had basically amended these. They came in as separate ones, and they were assigned a number, but in reality, we, we amended them to the earlier school awards. So there's like 9A, 10A, and 11A, et cetera. And a couple of others in that same timeframe. So that's what we have. I think the tracker is up to date, that is the, all the applications that we have. And we'll go into what is outstanding in a minute, but yeah, let's take a minute and take a look at anybody having questions on the quarterly reports from ARPA. Rini, you had some?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. The first is on the Good Eat to Go, there was a question at the end, so I wanted to make sure that somebody noticed that and is getting back to the owner.
That was about extra money available?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get back to her.
Okay, thanks, you were just wondering, so she gave a report of the
Right.
Money that's been expended.
I think at this point, we, I mean, did we make a decision on anything? I, I think it came up briefly in discussion whether there might be a second, second round possibility. And I think, if I remember, our thinking at the time was that we were gonna stick to what we had awarded and probably not go on a second round to somebody who had already benefited.
Getting too far down on the amounts anyway.
And I think, you know, everybody's had a bite at the apple, and they may not get the second bite at the apple.
So there's nothing written that would say no. However, I will say this, the maximum amount that has been given to any small business to this point in time is $25,000.
Right, it seems very much on par with the other ones.
Right in that neighborhood, yeah, okay.
The other question I had is on the repavement of the tennis courts. So Dan, I know that you're here, so that's helpful, too. It says, because of the weather, it's been put off. So I'm playing tennis in Holyoke right now, because there's no nets up in Southampton. So I'm just wondering whether or not, it says it's gonna be in like May or June, but it's, I mean, are we on some list for some company?
We are. I'll, I'll just remind the Select Board of, much like not finishing the pickleball courts to the following spring is, the issue is, once they do that, they need that. I don't even think it's 24, I think it's like 72 hours of pretty stable temperature for it to actually cure, so.
Okay.
But yes, we are, we are on a list. What's that?
It's the company from Vermont that did the other
Vermont Recreational, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if it's gonna be a long time, then I'd say put the nets up.
Trip over the cracks.
Which reminds me, as I still, they asked me last fall, what color pickleball lines that they have to paint on the tennis courts are, and I haven't gone over to check and see what color they are, so. It reminds me, I gotta do that.
Yeah, I think in Holyoke, the yellow, if that helps any. I think that was
I think there was just, is there anybody else that had any questions about? Things, I know there, there's been a couple of challenges with the Concom agent. He's not been able to draw down a lot of his timeframe, but he now is able to come in on Tuesdays and Fridays and is working from the office, but then he's got a lot of time out in the field as well. So I think that's still something, it may end up being something that as we get around to doing some revision in the PQB manual, there may be a, a couple of wording changes that need to happen there.
Yeah.
Given that his is much more of an outdoor position going around to different sites. And it's, it's not a sedentary job. In terms of, in terms of the amount of hours he can actually work, he's splitting his time with another town.
Oh, I see.
Okay, and he's able to come in, I mean, he was only in here one day a week, and now he's able to come in two days a week. And so he's able to answer his emails and so forth more regularly. But there are other times when he's out in the field, so he hasn't worked as many hours, I think, as they had predicted he might. But they want him to.
And we just increased it.
We put it for 20, for FY '24, right, right. So part of it is, is just some of our, I think, our, some of our language in our personnel handbook that talks about the amount of time people have to spend in the office versus working out on, out on site or answering an email from home or whatever it might be.
But is he a contract employee?
Oh, he's an employee.
He's our employee, oh.
Okay.
The wording in the manual, if I can remember it correctly, is, I always mess this up. Working from home is only allowed by, is it exempt or not exempt if you're salaried?
Don't recall, okay, but.
Employees.
Yep, okay, anybody else have questions? Tim?
Tammy Walunas, Historical Society President. On the reports, thank you very much for the money. There was a spot on there that asked about issues. And we hit issues in our basement. How would we go about finding if there was extra money? That we might be able to get that covered?
Did you already get the full 25?
No.
No, they got, they got, was it?
We got 12 something.
12, four.
That was what the was for, right?
Right, that was what, and once, then we hit a problem with the furnace, so that was another 400 and 30. And then the sump pump, the 15-year-old sump pump went on us. So it's another thing that we had to buy.
Don't you have the ability to, for those kind of things, to go to CPC? Because last time when I asked that question, you said, yes, we do, but we didn't have the time to. So something that, because historical usually is, between housing and historical, there's always a lot more money in that, those pots.
Yeah, it's just getting it done in time to get it at a annual, annual or a special town meeting. I just, I wanted to ask the question only because we were, the ARPA grant was for specifically the basement. And those were things that happened there, but if not, then that's fine.
So you've got 400 that you know, and then you don't know what the cost of the sump pump is yet?
Correct, the dehumidifier just came in finally, so we'll, that'll be going in. That was taking forever to come in.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I would just
That's fine.
The idea was more, I think, as we designed the form, was to say, okay, is this particular thing on track with what you had in mind? It wasn't like, oh my God, there's something new that happened that we hadn't planned on, we weren't thinking of that. But I can see where that has happened, obviously.
Yeah.
I think I would just caution us, just because we are getting very low in the, in the figures here.
Very good, thank you.
Probably not at this point, but thanks for asking. Anybody else on quarterly reports? If not, how about on, we have the financial report that Bradley's done. I had that sent to you electronically, so you can look at it. And that, if anybody has had the time, if you haven't, I would just encourage you, because Bradley's done a good job on this to, if I can pull it up, of course, would help, to cross-reference all these if I can pull it up, of course, would help, to cross-reference all these separate purchase order numbers with the actual expenses, and so again, as we look at what people say on their quarterly reports that they have remaining, you know, we can do a cross-check ourselves against his report and see that indeed we're all in sync and everything is being accounted for. So you've got the summary table from him, as well as the, more the breakdown from expenses and some of those that are in the wage category as well. If anybody had any quick questions on any of those, or not? Those have been very helpful to take a look at, I think.
Yeah, I just think as time goes on, especially in the next fiscal year, and to, I think, somewhat the cares and CPA and everything else, I mean, money gets allocated, and then it needs to make sure it's spent or accounted for. Because I think when we get close to the deadline, it's gonna, we don't want to, you know, we wanna make sure we use it.
Right, yeah, so I think, you know, if there's anybody that is picking up on anything that, you know, doesn't look like it's on schedule, there's some that, you know, we can tell from the, from the narrative in the quarterly report, that things are, you know, either on track, or they're, they've been delayed, or they're about ready to start in the next quarter or something, so that, hopefully, the narrative of the quarterly report should sync a bit with Bradley's report in terms of where things are, but I think we've done a better job at getting something in place that can help us go forward on this. So thanks, Bradley, for keeping track of that, and if anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out to Bradley on that, but I think we've got a pretty good tracking system. Anything? Okay, all right, so then we do have, just to bring up, we've got a couple of outstanding ARPA requests before us that have been with us for a while. Let me find my sheet again, hold on. Yep, okay, so we have, so, we have two, we have two from, I think we have five altogether that I'm aware of, we have two from Board of Health that are pending, we have one from the town administrator that's pending, we have two from Canal Bowling Lanes that are pending, oh, and then finally, one other one is the, from the town administrator, supplemental funding for the green energies grant, if you remember on that one.
We were short.
We were short, like 4,000 to 5,000, I think it was, Ed, was that right?
Right, right.
So that's, that's what we have before us, so are we wanting to take these up and do any voting on these tonight? Are we ready to do that? Would you, what's anybody's drawthers on this? We have, I know, Ed, you had told me that we're not still ready on the financial software, you're still checking out?
Yes.
Something on that? And that's between, Jen has got to check her references, and Bradley's got to check his references.
And I have to check my references.
With the two different towns and, or towns and companies involved? So we really do need to get that, I mean, what do you, what do you think our reality is gonna be on that? And I want, it's a big chunk of money that we're holding, we're holding aside, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna not fund it, but can we, in the next couple of weeks, can we get those references, do you think, or?
Once we're done with the fiscal year '22.
I did have a question about that, it was the, hang on. All right, financial software. It was 128,749.
And we have set that aside, I mean, we have, you know, out of the total amount, we've already approved a million 646 out of the allocation of a million 844. We have committed technically this 128,000, we've got it hanging out there, so all together with that and what we've already approved, we've got a million 77, million 774, 788.87 already taken care of, so to speak, okay?
Will this figure cover any, do we have maintenance costs the first year?
It would be included in this.
It would be included in that figure?
In that first year contract.
And the way it works, there, do you pay by the user?
There are different modules, yes, so it depends on, if we pick up all the modules or not.
Okay, well, I think this is a priority of the other.
It's one that we've committed to even last year, that we wanted to get some improvements in our financial system.
It'll be a big improvement, no doubt about it.
Definitely on the radar for a long time.
Well, it saves a lot of redundancy and a lot of things that are happening now, you know, where systems are not talking to each other, so I think this would be a big.
Like I've been saying all along, it'd be great to have assessors involved, too. There's a lot of duplication there.
There may be a module that would be part of, and so that's part of this, is, you know, how many, how many modules make sense for the town, and what is it that we really want to do, and, you know, which, which of the two companies, I think there's sort of two finalists?
There's actually three.
Three, okay, that, you know, could they really offer the best deal for what we need? So there's that, the one I think we've already kind of technically talked about and approved, but I would like a formal vote on it, would be the green communities one, while we're on the town administrator one, and that, I had put in a placeholder of 6,000, but that's too much, so Ed, tell me what the real figure is, and I'll change that.
Can we find it?
On my chart?
4,000 and something.
Yes, well, what's here is 4470.
44?
70.
Even, 4470?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna make that trade on my chart right now.
Yep, 4,470.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion to approve ARPA funding to pay for supplemental funding for the DOE-R Green Communities Grant.
That was for the four projects that we had talked about last time?
Right.
Correct.
Okay, all right, motion by Rini, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Francine, second, any discussion?
The amount is 4470.
4470, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, so we'll put that one in here. All right, we've got two back at the Board of Health, which we'll pick up in a second here, I finished typing. So one is the, sorry, hang on. Goes back up. Let's see, we've got two, nope, wrong one, hold on. So we have one for extended COVID hours for FY '24. We had approved for this past year, 4751 for this past year, and this request is essentially almost the same, 4749 for fiscal '24. And there's an application, I think, in your packet, if you haven't read that. I mean, the application we've got a couple of months ago now, we've had this on hold because we weren't sure whether we would accommodate this in the budget or not, or whether it might be considered under here.
And it's not in the budget?
It's not in the budget, I believe.
I really don't feel like I can support it, it's not really, I mean, our COVID emergency is ending, and it kind of bypasses the usual procedure for PQB and approval of changes within staff positions, so I don't really feel that it's, it's not something I can support.
Anybody else have comments? Just trying to find it here, hold on. Yeah, me too. We have the, the report, I believe, that showed what they've actually spent this year. Put my fingers on it, would be good. I think they had drawn down most, most of it, they were down to the last, last $1,000 maybe?
Yeah, the balance, here's the quarterly report.
Yeah, can you find that?
The quarterly report.
Okay, yeah. Right, balance is $1,476 out of the 4751 approved for last.
Which is probably for the rest of the fiscal year, right?
Most likely, yeah, because we had approved the full, full year, so. So that's that one. Anybody else have any thoughts? We've heard Rini's.
This is the one on the contractor?
Nope, this is the director, extended hours, three extra hours a week.
I guess my only concern here is the plans for the next quarter, because this was through March 31st, of the items, 1, 2, 3, the, half of them are related to COVID, and as Rini said, I'm not sure how much activity there is in that. I'm not saying that extra time, I'm not making a decision there, I'm just focusing on what the planned activities are gonna be, and is how, how active is that content area compared to other things?
And three of the four, the other things are routine responsibilities that preceded COVID.
And so what is the implication if we don't approve this? Was that addressed in the application? I'm trying to, we've got too much paper here tonight, guys.
I know, it's.
I thought the request before us had to do with '24's budget.
It does.
It does.
Right, so there's nothing, there'd be zero impact in the remainder of this fiscal year?
Correct, we're covered through this fiscal year, but going forward.
We're looking at.
And the budget that we just approved earlier, or agreed to move forward, did not have the additional hours in there.
Correct.
It's 32 hours.
I think that's true, is that right, Ed? We're right on that, we didn't approve the extra hours in the budget?
Correct.
It did not, no.
So we are at, yeah, what we had originally, yep. So again, this was. I have the application. Yeah, here we go, here we go. So the things that maybe were a little bit, I mean, I don't know if there's gonna be continued vaccine clinics for COVID and flu clinics, but updating of the post-pandemic emergency preparedness plans that include fire, EMD, and police chief, greater emphasis on local preparedness and coordination with federal and state agencies, updating emergency preparedness plans, emergency dispensing plans, and the CMP plan, CEMP plan. Continued meetings with the Hampshire Public Health, Hampshire Public Preparedness Coalition. These are a couple of things that probably.
Those activities preceded COVID.
But these are different from what we had funded before, though, and then the opioid settlement fund part of this, right? Isn't the Hampshire Public Preparedness Coalition, isn't that, that's not related, that's the Northampton grant that they keep talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But the emergency preparedness plan, the web EOC drills, and the bi-weekly DPH conference calls, I mean, these are routine activities of the Board of Health.
Well, to move things along, I'll move that we take no action on it and bypass it.
All right, come back to it at a later time? Is that what you're?
Well, effectively, just take, I mean, or if you'd rather have a vote to deny it.
No, I mean, not necessarily, just to take no action on it tonight?
Yeah.
All right, so John's made that.
Well, yeah, and I guess to be clear, I would move that we take no action on this, and the, and the department should not anticipate this being funded for fiscal year '24, they should plan accordingly.
Mm-hmm, okay, all right, so we have that as a motion?
Yep.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any opposed? All right, the second one from Board of Health was for the extended, contract expand, contract inspection services, which we had funded this past year at $20,000, and we had also encumbered 10. Their request is for 30, and I think they maybe were not aware that we had already put 10 aside for this.
Didn't we do something creative in the budget?
Yeah, we also moved money into the expense line from the wage line.
So is the 10 that is currently in there, is that sufficient to cover what they needed?
So there's 10 in the budget plus 10 in ARPA right now.
No, there's 6,000 some odd in the budget.
Right, half of the health agent?
Yes.
Oh, right, we, yeah, right, we did part of that, okay.
And then there's the 10 that, from ARPA that.
We had encumbered 10.
In reserve, yes.
Correct, yeah.
So that gets them to 16 for next year.
So they've got 16 so far, and they're requesting 30, I believe that was the application?
That's 50% of it, right?
Yeah, we've got 50%.
In the thought of only moving half of the health agent, is that it would be a six-month hold?
Get somebody in six months. So I'll make a motion that we pass over this for now.
Well, I'm okay with that, as long as we communicate to them what we did.
And just to be clear, I heard a motion and a second by Joy, so a motion by Rini, a second by Joy, so discussion?
Other discussion, as long as we clarify to them that, here are the steps we did, and we believe this will give you six months of funding and '24 to do it.
Okay, Francine, would you pass that along to the board then?
Well, I think, I think we need to put it in the award letter, if we're, they, they have been told that their original award was 20,000, they did not know, I don't believe, that we encumbered 10, that wasn't in the award letter.
I think they do.
Well, they may know, but I don't know if that award letter said that, so my, because the 10 would be for fiscal '24.
They watch these meetings like hawks.
I know, but there will be an award letter nonetheless, and even if we encumbered the 10, I would like it formalized that there is 10,000 through ARPA for FY '24.
Right, and looking at what we did in the budget.
Right.
Assuming it passes.
Yeah.
Okay, can I just add something, and again, it comes back to what I learned?
Yep.
I, I'm not clear whether or not multifamily dwellings have been regularly or routinely inspected, whether or not this particular situation starts to draw some attention and the Board of Health and the Fire Department and the Building Department start to be a little more active in looking at those living arranged, living situations, those housing situations, whether or not these services are not gonna be needed in the future, continued, is what I'm trying.
Well, that's a big unknown right now, in my mind.
But I think inspection services are not gonna go away, I mean, just from.
No, no, but I think perhaps, I'm not talking about routine inspections.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking about very involved cases. Just to give you a heads up.
Well, it helps if they have their meetings recorded, or if they post their minutes, so then we, other people could know what's going on, so Francine, would you mind reporting to the board about the financial situation?
Sure.
Thank you.
But I won't be present for their next meeting.
She might not be there for another meeting.
Because of the election.
You'll be away? I think our term is, our term is.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa.
You're gonna continue to go as a private citizen, aren't you?
She's gonna go to the meeting anyway.
I'm gonna take a long vacation.
For the goodness of her heart, right, right. No, so that's what I'm saying, is I think we need.
No, as a liaison, maybe you can email them or something.
Well, that could be too, but I think it would be clear to have one message coming out with clarity.
Yes.
Yeah, so we know that we've got the 10,000 in ARPA that is already approved for FY '24, and we've got roughly the six, let's get the exact figure, Ed, so that we could let them know that at some point, whatever that figure is in the budget, that would cover at least a half of a year of contract inspection services.
Or what has been happening, yeah.
Yeah, and then, you know, this, it's something we can take up at a future meeting. Yeah?
Yeah, and it sounds like if there, if there's going to be stepped-up enforcement that may increase this, that hopefully it would start with the building commissioner leading the charge, and then upon his findings, deferring out whether he wants to send the fire chief in because it's fire code violations or the Board of Health, so we'd have more control over it.
It's across departments, yes, not electrical and plumbing.
Hopefully not electrical.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, we're done with the discussion.
All right, so I think the motion, what was the motion again?
Pass over this request for now.
What's the table, right?
To table this request of 30,000 right now, because we have. To table this request of thirty thousand right now, because we have essentially sixteen thousand, we have essentially half of it taken care of between ARPA and the budget, and it can come back to us at a later date. It does sound like, you know, getting qualified people are just getting more and more impossible. I've heard that from other towns as well, whether it's this type of skill or a couple of other.
I think it's across the board, private sector, public sector.
It is really, you know, tough to get these things filled. So we understand that we need to keep on these services because of what's going on in town. So no doubt about the need for the actual position itself. But just encourage them to keep on plugging and trying to find somebody. And I think we had talked about whether a contract employee, right, or a part-time employee was more beneficial at one point in time in terms of what they needed, but.
Well, from the standpoint of the budget lines, it's absolutely more cost-effective.
Yes.
But I just think that when we look at our entire departments, whether it's fire, police, accounting, treasurer, assessors, Board of Health, I mean, there's just a crisis of staffing. And the more we can do to assist, I think will be helpful, but I just don't think it's always soft money. I think this is, we're down to the last, what, forty-four thousand dollars of this money?
Mm-hmm, getting close, yeah, somewhere there. Okay, so the other two that we have out are two.
Do those vote on that?
No.
Now, we're.
You got to call for the vote.
Yeah. Oh, did I, I'm sorry, did I miss that?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And who seconded that?
I did.
Joy did, Rini motion, Joy second.
Thanks, I got Rini for the motion.
Yep, sorry, guys, side track here. Okay, so we have two last ones that I believe are on our list that are pending. They're both from Canal Bowling Lanes, number forty and forty-two. One is, oh, gosh, what was it? One is for a new electronic, I guess, marquee sign at the bowling alley. They'd had one for years and years, then it went down in a storm, according to the narrative. We've got a link, link the narrative here. And they've talked about while the lanes are up for sale, the intention of the trustee is to keep it running as a bowling lanes until a suitable buyer is found to carry on the family legacy. Talked about the challenges they had during COVID with the loss of revenues, et cetera, et cetera. So they're, then they are still obviously in business. Actually, I went by there yesterday, and their parking lot was pretty full, I must say. So they're still doing leagues. They have put in a quest for, I believe it was broken out to.
Twenty thousand.
It was, yeah, rounded up to twenty thousand, it was a little bit less, nineteen-nine, I think, of which eleven thousand was for a sign, and then with installation and electrical connection, that was what added it up to the nineteen-nine, almost twenty thousand dollars. So there's that one, and their second one is for a website design for thirty-six hundred dollars to be able to do more online transactions, I guess, in reserved lanes and party events in large groups or something along those lines, from what I read, if I remember, and do tournaments and so forth, and have that booking be done online. So it's thirty-six hundred for the website development, and they've said that their hosting agreement would be a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year, which they would be easily able to cover themselves. So we have two of them, would anybody like to talk about either one? Take the sign first?
I'm just trying to, yeah, here it is. We've had it several different times, so I'm just trying to.
No, I mean, it's, well, it came up in March, we haven't really talked about it.
Right, 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 but we, it was part of the packet, a couple of different times, so I'm just trying to find it again.
Oh, it's in, yeah, it's in tonight's package.
Is my initial concern on this, sir, is that when we have made awards to non-governmental bodies, it's been the only time that we've said no. And everything else is pretty, well, excluding the Board of Health issue. But, you know, we had, we have bishistas, you know, that went through, we had.
Good eats to go.
Good eats to go, and some others, we had the church, we had the historical society go through. But the ones we rejected was the ones that came in for businesses that then relocated out of town. And this is a business that they're, you know, unfortunately, they're operating as trustees and awaiting the sale. So.
But they're trying to keep the business going in town as the same old business that's been here.
I understand it, which is their charge as trustees of the estate.
Right.
So, I don't know. It's a difficult one when you compare our previous actions, in my view.
Yeah, I feel a little mixed about it too. I mean, it's a huge source of activity for kids and families and adults in town, but I'm just, you know, like, the sign, wasn't there insurance costs that would have, could have covered for that? It was only last year when this happened, so.
Well, I think they said the sign's been down for three or four years in their narrative.
They said twenty-one.
May twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one, I think they said. I don't know, we could ask that question. I mean, I think from a business point of view, I guess I'm not totally catching your point, John. I mean, in terms of long-time businesses in town.
What's to say that whoever decides to buy it tomorrow for the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's there, that's the asking price, you know, I don't know what they're going to do. Whoever decides to buy it, that they're not going to level it and just make it a truck stop. The future is uncertain, because they're acting as trustees, which they should, they are only charged with maintaining the asset until they can flip it over or sell it. These are enhancements, like, the sign wasn't there when they became trustees, it was already gone. I get it, this is going to, and potentially, this would help them increase their asking price. But, you know, when we, you know, we were moving forward with the other company as well until it was discovered through our own actions, not because the company came forward, that they relocated out of town.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
How do we know there's not an offer on the table? I think the town administrator would like to talk.
Mm-hmm, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So the flip side of that is, what's the tax value to the town if it goes out of business and somebody just leveled it and did nothing versus trying to keep a local business going?
Right, we have no control over that.
Well, except you can.
I mean, unless we buy it.
Help someone try to keep it going and actually make it more viable for someone to purchase and keep it going.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, and, I don't know, I mean, it's certainly been around since the nineteen-sixties, I think. So, I mean, I think the intent, I mean, the fact that they haven't, you know, decided to go in another direction, and they really want to hold it to keep it as an entertainment center that may have more than just bowling. I mean, it may not just be a bowling lanes and it's got the lounge or whatever with it, but it sounds like they're trying to keep it as an entertainment center for the town. So that was, I mean, the way I heard this was that they would, they were not going to entertain offers for any other reason, but maybe I don't know that for sure. But, I mean, the two, the two things together, I mean, I guess I look at it as other businesses that we've dealt with, you know, we were in the twenty-five thousand dollar range, the two things together here are less than twenty-five thousand. So, I mean, I, from my point of view, from a, I don't have a particular issue with it myself, but I hear the other points as well.
I think that the point of this was to help because of the impact of COVID. And they had a significant loss to their lounge, to their services because of COVID. They still had to pay a fifteen hundred dollar liquor license. You know, it feels a little different now that we're down to the last, and we just had a request or inquiry about the Historical Commission, we had inquiry about our own town department. So it feels like the stakes are higher now just because of that. But if this has been six months ago when we had approved bishistas and some of the others, I think it would have been a little bit easier to say yes when we knew we had, you know, several hundred thousand dollars left in it. So it's hard, I mean, I think that, I would, I would be okay with approving a conditional, whatever the total amount is, provided that, you know, I mean, I just don't want to give the money and then find out that something, you know, completely opposite happened, or, you know, I don't know how we can ensure that, you know, they either, you know, stay in business or something else. But I would certainly support if there was some kind of condition attached to it. So it's basically for the sign and also, but it's not, I mean, they lost a lot of money because of COVID. I mean, they detailed it all right here.
They detailed all the operating loss from COVID, which is what we'd have some of the other businesses to do.
Right.
So they had done that.
Six point five thousand loss generated by the lounge. At the same time, they're paying a hundred, another fifteen hundred dollars, so add that to that, and that's eight thousand there. And then they were closed, a forty-five thousand dollar loss to the lanes because of the closure because of COVID. I mean, in the application, does it say that they received other funds?
Does not, I don't know that they had gotten one of those PPP loans or whatever. I mean, we could ask, I mean, we could go back with just two or three questions to the applicant, like we had done with some of the others, and just ask to clarify. I mean, had you, you know, been able to get any other financial assistance through the COVID programs? Or, you know, was your insurance able to cover any?
Well, it does, it does ask, the actual application says, I certify that I have the authority of the department, blah, blah. I further certify that the information is true and correct. And then it says something, I remember, for where the funds will use only for the purposes described in this application. And then it said something I thought of, oh, this fund request does not duplicate any other operational or governmental funding.
Yeah, that's one of the boxes they had to check, absolutely.
But I think with, like, I know with bishistas, there was a number of back and forth with documentation about.
All right, if we wanted to go back with questions, I would think we would, you know, we could do that. I mean, I would think they would, or ask them to come to a meeting and tell us, one or the other.
You know, they have.
So do we have any?
They do, they have documentation here.
Yeah, I mean, they've got the, they've got all the information on the sign and the website, they're putting pro formas. We have that information here. So I think your question originally was, you know, could the sign have been covered by some insurance money? I mean, these came as two separate things, so I wouldn't want to, you know, don't have to take them together by any means. I was just lumping them because they were from the same entity. But we have the one request for the website, which.
And we did, we did fund other businesses doing some computerized upgrades, whether they were putting on online menus or whatever, that would, I see the similarity there.
Well, we could take up and focus on the asked questions about the sign and take up the question of the, of the website, if you'd rather do that.
I would be comfortable doing that.
Split them out and go back with some other questions about issues around insurance and so forth about the sign, and just our concerns about, you know, if they, if they don't manage to be as successful as they hope to be, then, you know, getting somebody else to keep this running as a, as a business of a bowling lane entertainment center, then we're out twenty thousand dollars that could have been used elsewhere.
Right, right.
I don't see how we, I don't know how we would put a condition on it, I don't know what.
Yeah, and I was even thinking, even though the other request actually have online signups, I mean, that would probably, you could say, well, let's just approve like a six-month time, but that's not the way it works. You know, if you're going to do some kind of buy a package, it's going to be full price, it's not like you can fund half of it.
Right.
Just to, you know, to wait to see what happens.
Yeah, no, you'd have to get your website updated, yeah. Then it, there's the one-time fee basically for that, yeah.
I still feel like I'm not ready to vote on it. I just think that this is a business that is in transition.
All right, anybody else want to, anybody want to make a motion, or we pass on both of these?
Okay, I'll move that we approve the thirty-six hundred dollars for Canal Lane's website, and.
Thirty-six hundred? I thought it was more than that.
With the website?
The website's thirty-six hundred.
Yeah, are we just doing the website?
That's, there were two separate proposals. So the proposal is on the website right now.
And what was it, how much was the sign?
Twenty thousand.
Oh, wow.
Sign is twenty thousand, the website is thirty-six hundred.
Oh, nineteen, yeah, nineteen-nine-eighty-three.
Right. So we have a motion from Francine on the website, allowing them to create a more responsive website that has various features on it that they, I don't know if they even have a website now, I don't know.
Yeah, so they can do online signups and things.
More online things, yeah. So we have a motion, can I have a second? For purposes of discussion.
I'll second it.
All right, Rini, further discussion on this? I mean, personally, I don't see this as a terribly lost cause. I mean, I think this is going to be, it's obviously been up for sale for how long now, several months? And it's still obviously doing business. I mean, there are leagues going on, there's lots of cars out there on two or three days of the week at least. So they're certainly active, I don't see what harm there would be in putting some money to the website to keep them in business, and the sign may be a totally different issue, given the cost of it as well.
I think it could really help, you know, staff having to do all this, because according to what they just said, it says it would help for online signups for open bowling, leagues, league standings, tournaments, youth programs, parties, events, gift cards, all of that. So that would probably help reduce personnel, I would imagine, to some degree.
So I think we have a motion and a second, could we have a vote, please? All those in favor of funding the thirty-six hundred dollars for the website?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, so four in favor, one abstention. All right, thanks, so do that. And then I think we were saying that we wanted to pass on the sign for now, but maybe go back with some questions. So how about, I'm hearing the insurance question, is there another particular question that anybody has about that? Part of what John had tried to.
No, just, I mean, if twenty, if twenty thousand dollars is requested for the sign, and they're hoping that somebody buys and keeps the business, what happens if they don't?
Yeah, okay. So maybe we can try to get those questions before the, the person who's managing Canal Bowling Lanes and get that answer for us, okay?
At this time, may I be excused?
Yes, you, I know, have to leave, so thanks, Joy, appreciate it. Okay. That, I think, takes care of our ARPA business for tonight, so, moving on.
Any other business? I have, I have.
You got one more, okay, any other business that can't wait?
I'm just wondering what's happening as far as the Public Safety Building Committee and the reaching out to the firms, because I think our deadline for entering into a contract is the twenty-seventh of April.
Was that a deadline, or that was a suggested schedule?
That was what was in the RFQ, so that's what the firms understand to be the case.
So who's going to negotiate?
The select board, because we're the awarding authority.
The entire select board?
Well, no, we just have to.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out, so I can put this together.
Okay. I had emailed you and said I'm happy to be on a call with the Chair of the Public Safety Building Committee, with the three of us, but I just feel like we need to do this sooner rather than later. So I just want to make sure that the firms have reached out to and informed of the decision of the select board, and if the select board wants to authorize me and Ed and Mark Darnold to discuss, we know that there's up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of funding for negotiation, not that we have to spend all of it, but.
Yeah, try to save a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, the more the better, I would say.
I just want to make sure that, given the last couple of weeks, that we have a plan and that if the firms are expecting to be contacted by the, in a contract by the twenty-seventh, and that's two days from now.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the select board authorize Rini to enter into negotiations on our behalf with the Chair of Public Safety and the town administrator, and to report back on such findings.
Okay. I'll second that.
All right, John and Francine, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
So afterwards, maybe I can, we can talk about dates.
Yeah, shoot me some dates, I'll ask Mark, and I'll shoot them, I'm sure we can do it virtually, so.
Okay, so tomorrow or Thursday? Tomorrow's, well, twenty-seventh is twenty-seventh, so Thursday, let's shoot to Thursday, and I'll.
You guys are killing me.
I just, you know, given what happened, I just don't want to lose HKT from being on board.
Okay. Along those lines, the, we know that we had a, a letter of resignation from Christina Madsen. She came and talked to us, explained her rationale. Since then, we've received a letter asking that we hold on any action on that until she has a chance to meet with the committee on May second, first, whenever the next meeting is she wants to meet with the committee. I personally have no problem with that if the committee wants to do that.
Procedure-wise, you called for a vote to accept her letter of resignation. We've already.
We did not. We have not. We just announced that.
We just read it into the record?
We just said that we have a letter of resignation. We did not vote.
It was not on the agenda for a forty-eight hour notice anyway.
Yeah, it came in at the last minute, so it didn't, it didn't get acted upon at all. So, and then she asked for a chance to come and explain herself in person, which she did do. And since that meeting, she has written an email saying that she would like the, a delay of essentially until the next meeting of the PSBC so that she can talk to them in person as well. So.
Sounds like a sticky wicket. Between now and then, when she has, is she going to attend any meetings and act in that capacity or no?
There won't, the next meeting is Monday or Tuesday next week, so there's been no meeting since. So I mean, I think that's part of the discussion is to attend the meeting and re-explain or talk to them and see what they think about what she would like to do. I gathered from her note, she wanted to like to stay on the committee now, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not really sure.
So I think that's up to the committee to meet and talk about with her, so. So at this point in time, I'm, I'm just going to recommend that we not act on the resignation until our next time, our next meeting. I'm fine with that. Anybody okay? So at this point, I'm gonna.
Looks like we have license and permits.
I think we have, we have another, one beer and wine permit here, I believe. Yep.
Those PCFs have to wait for the PPP meeting.
They, they do, all of those.
All of them do?
Yep.
Yeah, so that's the COA, the highway, police, oh no, we did the police one, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And treasurer collector.
And the treasurer collector. Those wait, okay. So we have licenses and permits. So there's a Jessica Hagerman, one-day permit, wine and beer, Conan Park, May sixth, from one-thirty to seven-thirty. Picknick. I think all the paperwork looked like it was here.
I, I didn't have the paperwork, but I'm assuming it's in order, so I'll make a motion to approve it.
Yep. Everything was in place. I think we had the permit from, there was a photocopy of a permit from Paul Amack, Paul Amack, I believe, from, from them. Okay.
Yeah, there was.
So we have a motion. John, can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Francine? Let me just find it in the packet, okay. I read it the first time. I just want to go.
Okay, hold on a second.
It's a picnic for the benefit of the staff and the alumni of Shriners Hospital.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
We did. I just wanted to see, so it's, we talked about this with Mark. It's one-thirty to seven-thirty. That's six hours. Another out-of-town person.
Right.
It's interesting.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, at some point, if Park wants to change their fees, they can, they can do that.
They did change them. They went up.
Did they?
Yeah.
But there was talk about, you know, some of these, it's the same fee whether it's a day or.
Or a couple, few hours.
So that was the idea or whatever. So, I mean, I think the, you know.
Fees for out-of, higher fees for out-of-town.
Right, right. And then out-of-town, most of the applications we're approving are for out-of-town residents.
Right. So that'll be something with, you know, there's some changes at the park commission as well. It can be something they can talk about in the future. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved. All right, and next we have warrants. Francine?
Okay, warrant, W-23-40 payroll vendor, I'm sorry, one hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars and three cents. Vendor warrant, W-23-40A for fifteen thousand, eight hundred fifty, eighty-five dollars. Payroll warrant, PD-23-41 for fifty thousand, three hundred ten dollars and seventy-four cents. And another vendor warrant, W-23-42 for four hundred thirty-four dollars, eight hundred and ten dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay. Any questions on any of these offhand?
Only that, and this, this isn't a question for Francine, but only that some of the line items say that they're subject to over, which means we're in theory paying deficits, but is that possibly just related to, we just haven't gotten the books up to speed yet?
I think it's winter roads.
Well, there was more than winter roads because there's, and I didn't like water, water at Conan Park. And I don't see a trans, an article to transfer money for that.
Water at Conan Park?
That's what the line item says, and it's over budget. It's just one example.
Yeah, Lower Pioneer Valley, it says it all also. All of this food lunch stuff, is that because it's grant funded?
That's all grant.
Yeah, so that I got, but, just for reference, W-23 warrant, two, twenty-three dash forty-two, on page four, the line item, the code, it's twenty-five, five-two-zero-zero. Now that might be a revolving account, but it's Conan Park Pavilion.
That's a revolving account.
So that one's over just because we're not going to know what starting balance is until we're able to close the books and put that in, right?
Correct.
All right.
But how about on town hall building expenses, on BG Mechanical and fire detection systems? That's on warrant twenty-three forty, page one.
Revolving accounts all start with the code of two-five, right?
Sounds right.
I haven't counted there yet, but.
I mean, anything that says?
This one for, yeah, BG for twenty-four hundred thirty-six dollars.
Yeah.
What'd you say it was, twenty-three forty-two?
Twenty-three forty on the town hall one. First page. About two, three, yeah, half a dozen down, about the middle of the page. EG is fire detection systems, four hundred dollars, BG mechanical, three different bills for about two thousand dollars total, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Have to go back and take a look.
Unless, is that one of those that, now, let's, let's not forget, remember, we had put some money aside here in ARPA to cover overages on some fire expenses and some town hall expenses with the photocopier, right?
Yes, I'll have to go back and take a look at these.
But do those end up having to be then, weren't those going to be also on the warrant now that I think about that?
They would. It's, they're not these.
Yeah.
I knew this one account was close, but I didn't think it had gone over, so.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to check.
Check on that.
So in the event, in the event that they are over, could we quickly type up and add a new article?
Yeah, add, add an article somehow, if we can do that.
I would need a funding source.
Well, town hall, right? So how about the hundred thousand we already set aside for town hall through ARPA?
What hundred thousand?
It's on the list. We put a hundred thousand in, it's a tape and paint and.
Yeah, that's the old town hall.
That's the old town.
Town hall, town hall. Totally different story.
Let's go see, what did I miss?
Totally different story. Yeah. So, so that's, so that's that. And then the, I think, I'm assuming the hometown structures one from fire, that was maybe one of the ones that was pending with the, the overages that we had talked about?
No, hometown structures would be a split between revolving fund.
Okay.
For brush and ARPA.
Okay.
That's the trailer, yeah.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Okay. All right. Well, maybe check on that town hall one. That's the other one that came to mind that looked different. But I guess, am I, am I wrong that the fifteen thousand we set aside between town hall, townwide and fire EMS in ARPA that we covered temporarily in ARPA, that also should be an article on, on the warrant? Because we were, weren't we going to recoup that money back into the ARPA fund?
It is.
It, it's on there?
It's two articles.
Oh, two, okay. I missed it then. I wasn't focusing on it.
One is appropriation from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation.
Okay.
And then the other one was for, I think I worded it as townwide and municipal.
Ah, okay. Yeah, we did, okay. I hadn't focused on that, tying it to ARPA now that I just saw that. Okay. All right. If no questions on the warrants, we don't have any minutes to approve. I don't think there's anything on the pending list that's of any, anything new. Some of them we've already dealt with. We're still waiting on the finalization of the Upper Palmer Road property, I believe.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
What's the hazard mitigation plan waiting for?
We've got to do a statement of work and reach out to communities or to entities to help us be the facilitator and walk through an whole update process. So we'd probably reach out to, I don't know, two or three entities at least to give us a proposal for that. So we've got to get that done within the next month, probably two.
And is the HR personnel classification compensation plan, is that in the hands of?
That's the, that's the one that's with Collins already. So that's why some of these, the pending list, you know, we just need to clean that up.
Right.
It's not as, not as bad as it looks, honestly. So other than that, we have a, these dates are wrong at the bottom under the calendar. The town meeting is going to be the ninth now. And we have set a meeting for select board at six o'clock on May second?
May second, okay.
May first or?
First.
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 May first.
Day night?
That's just to do the warrant, right?
Okay.
The warrant and, yeah, May, May first.
But isn't that when Robert's doing his thing?
He's doing it.
He's doing his at seven.
Seven.
And we're doing ours at six.
That's why we're definitely going to be done in an hour.
So we don't have a meeting on the second, first?
So May first, six o'clock, select board. Seven o'clock moderator meeting to go over the articles. And May ninth will be the town meeting. Okay. Town election, May sixteenth. And hopefully, our town community meeting will be May twenty-fourth. We will confirm that next time we meet. All right.
Do we have anything else going on?
Uh, was everybody's druthers on this?
I'm with that.
All right. Come on up, Bob.
Um, Bob Fletcher, Twenty-two Gun Road. I think we need to see between this board, I think our water commissioners, possibly highway superintendent, there is an issue. Christine, you and I have talked about this over at the well with the beavers.
With the what?
The beavers.
Beavers, okay.
The beavers are expanding. The problem over there is getting worse. The destruction to land over there is, the flooding has probably tripled since last year. And now, it is now going towards the back of the property. The water commissioners expressed to my son in their most recent meeting that they're not going near this thing. I don't know what the, I, I really don't know why beavers have become so sacred, but there really is only one way to solve a beaver problem. We can bring fish and wildlife in.
Yeah, I was going to say, that seems logical.
It doesn't usually solve the problem, but I guess it's probably the path of least resistance. My feeling is, I've been on the land for almost thirty years taking care of it. We have so many problems out in the back that we need a phenomenal amount of money to fix them. And the beavers have just made it worse. And I really think Zone One around that well was always spoken as sacred ground. You didn't go near it. You didn't do anything there. There was a reason for it. And my feeling is, the water department, water commissioners have to take a serious stand on this. I can see, I mean, there is a tremendous amount of water from the back of that property that drains to the front of the property, which exits into the Manhan River. None of that can happen anymore because now the water is pushing back towards that. I was out there about a week ago before the rain and it was bad. I can imagine what it is now. I'm certain that maybe the water commissioners probably know more than I do that the well is not in jeopardy of being compromised. If they're willing to take the chance, that's fine. But you have a tremendous amount of stagnant water that is in the area of that well. And I, I think a different position needs to be taken on it. And whether we sit down and say, you know, we need to have a discussion. Because now, I have an agreement with the town. I cannot fulfill my obligations. There was some maintenance that was going to be done by us out back there. We cannot do it because as soon as we start working, the water's going to come right at us. Whether we redirect water so it makes its way to the Manhan, I don't, I have not seen the actual beaver dam, but it has been in place for more than two years now.
Really?
Yes.
So who would bring in the fisher, fisheries and wildlife? That seems like.
Wouldn't this be a commission too?
I was told that the water commissioners and the water department control that land and what they say goes. And I, like I said, whether we have a meeting to discuss this, we, the whole back of that property didn't even get touched last year because fields that were normally dry, which should have been dry, were flooded with water. And so, you know, when I don't do some stuff out there, the conservation commission gets on me and they want to know why. And I've asked them what their position is and they take the same position. We're, we're not going near it. And everybody that I know that's had problems with beavers, they have tried being a nice guy on this, but beavers have one thing on their mind and they're going to do it. And like I said, I, I wish someone could tell me why. I mean, we, we open up hunting season for deer and for bears and for pheasants. And for some reason, when you bring up the word beaver, everybody, they want nothing to do with it. And I just don't understand it. They are pretty much like, like rats.
Yeah.
And.
Has there been any outreach at all to fishing game or?
Not yet.
I don't believe so. And whether we.
Seems like that would be a logical.
Yeah, so long as it's something that can.
Whether we put a machine in there and we redirect water away from, I'm, I'm sure what they'll do is they'll just pick up and they'll move.
Yeah.
To wherever you change the direction of the water. But I, I do think it needs to be taken more serious than what it is. That's my, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think, I don't, obviously, we don't have any, any brilliant ideas tonight, but what.
No, I've just thrown it out there.
We wanted to.
Oh, I'm glad to hear the issue. First I've heard of it. We haven't dealt with this in two years, at least since I've been on the board. I haven't, I haven't had.
We've talked about it. And that's about what, as far as it's gone, we've talked about it. And, you know, there's, there is some work that needs to be done out there in the back of the property. We need to, the public is accessing more of the property. We need to put some crossings in in the waterways, but the Ziploc family put a network of drainage ditches out there. They need to be maintained. They haven't been. All of this, I mean, it's, it's money, it's time, it's, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Chris?
Yeah.
Knowing also that we only have, what, two weeks left before the chair of the water commission retires, that I'd be happy to go talk with him and just see about next steps and then report back so we can at least get his institutional knowledge before he retires.
But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, wouldn't object to that, to.
And just report.
A sign.
And I, I'm here to make it look like I'm pointing fingers.
No.
But for as many years as I've been in there.
Can you step up to the mic?
For as many years as I've been in there, Zone One has always been top of the list. You don't, you know, you just don't go near it. You don't mess with it. And, and for them to say this isn't a problem is, I, I think it's, it, it needs to be addressed.
Okay. All right. Well, if everybody's in agreement, let's, let's have John reach out.
I'll make a motion to authorize John to go talk to the model commissioners and report back to us.
Okay.
My guess is, I fully, I, I do understand.
Okay.
Whatever it is about beavers, you have a mindset that there are these wonderful creatures that need to be saved and that may be true. But in this case, with our public water supply, with everything else that we frown on doing in that area, I think that we need to address that.
Yeah, I, I think we do.
All right. So we'll have John reach out and report back.
So thank the vote.
On, yes, we had a second, my Francine, so all, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thanks. All right. Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, could we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Moved.
Moved.
All right.
Second.
All those. Whoa.
All in one motion.
Who seconded?
I think John motioned and seconded.
Whatever.
You could, you could split it up.
All aye.
Yeah, John and Rainey, whatever. We all did. So anyway, all those in favor, aye. We are adjourned at nine-ten. Thank you very much, everybody.